Meeting of the Milton Planning Board. It's October 26, Thursday, 7 o'clock. This is our ninth meeting of fiscal year 18. I'm Alex Whiteside, the chairman. Why don't we introduce ourselves, beginning with you, Brian?
I'm Brian Furz, member.
April Anderson Lamro, a member.
Julia Getman, clerk.
Laura Metzger, Assistant Town Planner.
Denny Swenson, Planning Board Member.
Cheryl Taggias, member.
All right. Now, we're going to meet again on November 9, and then we're going to discuss when we're going to meet after that. Maybe we should discuss it now. When do you want to meet after the 9?
Second.
All right. I think that we're thinking the 18th. What is the 18th?
18th is a Saturday, so I'd rather not.
18th of December is a Monday.
How about the Tuesday before Thanksgiving?
That I can do.
Twenty...
What?
Twenty-first, is that me?
Twenty-first, yep. Actually be in Massachusetts.
I can do that.
We've got everyone's nodding, okay, Cheryl, except for you.
Yes, I can do that.
Okay, 21st. And we'll keep it, we'll keep it quick if we can, but we might not be able to now. We've got a group of minutes that are going around the table. I've made some, I've made some changes, some proposed changes, and at about 7:15, we'll see what we think. Or if it takes longer than that, we'll wait. At 7:15, we had a public hearing scheduled for an application for preliminary subdivision at 1065 Brush Hill Road. But we're going to continue that until our next meeting. At what time?
7:15, November 9.
November 9 at 7:15. So if you're here...
Thank you.
If you're here about 1065 Brush Hill Road, you can leave now. Or you can stay, because we've got a good agenda.
May I ask a quick question about that? And just put it on the, maybe if anybody's watching or if Mr. Corcoran's here, just something to think about. I'd love to understand if, if it was related to this, why the tree came down on Brush Hill Road, if it had anything to do with this application. I know they are doing tree work over there, so maybe it was a public decision, but I'm just curious. So Bill, if you could pass that along.
If I may, I did speak with Ned Corcoran about that. He was surprised to hear that. He wasn't aware of it, and he drove by and confirmed that it is not on the property in question.
So it was a problem, okay.
So we're unsure.
Well, it's someone else's tree.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Not a town tree?
Not that I'm aware of.
A town tree, Bill?
Certainly in the town, right away. It was, it was in, it was in the road. There was a guardrail going around it, so it was certainly...
If it was a town tree, then we want to know the reason why.
Who took it down, right?
Right. So if we can get an answer on that.
And we want them to replace it with a similarly sized tree.
Good luck. The tree was 300 years old.
You could tell them that.
All right. Did the town take it down?
They might have. I'd just love to know the answer, because I mean, it was out in the roadway, so they may have, but...
What kind of tree?
It was that huge one that had the guardrail floats around it. If you go there, I'm sure there's an empty space, right?
Right, now...
I'll go up. I haven't been there.
The tree's still in the yard. You can still see it.
All right, now, we're going to do citizen speak. Any resident of Milton should think about speaking at citizen speak, because it's a good opportunity to discuss planning matters, but not the planning matters that are on our agenda.
They can speak to those at the time of the agenda.
We'll give you an opportunity to speak to those at the time of, that we reach them. Okay. There are no citizens to speak. We're going to go to Lauren and the Assistant Town Planner, who is going to report to us.
Yes, just some quick updates. First, I'll start with, I met with the trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust last night. The group is currently looking to regain momentum. They've had a new selectmen appointed to the committee, and there was some gap time in, when the committee had been regularly meeting. In interest of being proactive as opposed to reactive, I know they are interested in identifying some potential areas for possible affordable housing and opportunities for that. I think it would be in the good interest of that committee to meet with the Planning Board and perhaps the Master Plan Implementation Committee to try to get some ideas working and identify some needs. So in the coming Planning Board meetings, there may be a representative that would like to speak with you, and I can update you as that unfolds. And next, we, in talking about process improvements, I have been continuing to meet with various departments and the town administrator on the weeks in between our Planning Board meetings. We are making progress, working towards some better outcomes. And something exciting that I let the Planning Board know about this week is that with the IT department, we spoke, we now have agenda alerts that the public can sign up for on the website. It's very simple. You go to thetownofmilton.org. On the homepage, there's a section that says, "Where do I go for?" You can click on that, go to Subscribe to News, which will then allow you to submit your email and select that you would like to be notified any time an agenda for the Planning Board is posted. The IT department is doing this as a pilot program, and hopefully, if this continues to be successful, they can open it up to other boards and committees. But, so that is functioning. We know that it does work, and we encourage the public to sign up for that.
And I've used it, and it's wonderful.
Is he here?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that is the end of my updates.
All right, well, we're going to...
May I ask Lauren a question?
Of course.
Can you track how many people are signed up for it?
That I am not sure of, but I can speak with IT and find out.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, the next item has to do with the tree. Beechwood. The Beechwood Tree. So, and at 7:30, we're going to, our, we have a public hearing on 475 Adams Street, Site Plan Approval, but we can't start it until 7:30. So we won't. But we're going to discuss Beechwood and Beech Trees.
We had some, you've seen the arborist reports, and I think there were two of them, for the Beech Tree and the Sugar Maple at Beechwood Lane? Beechwood Lane. You've heard different comments, and the board asked that Mr. Rankin come in and address the board. Mr. Rankin is here.
All right, well, we've heard that these trees are non-thriving, and some of the failure to thrive is, has been attempted to be laid to rest at your doorstep. And so we understand that there's an eight, you have an $8,000 bond, or is it $18,000, Bill? I think it's $8,000.
There's a, there's a cash amount that is in the hands of the building inspector and town engineer for the roadway.
Right. The completion of the roadway.
Yep.
And what do you, we'd like to report on the roadway.
The roadway?
I'm still waiting for a response from, as far as the road, the road is installed. The curbing, from my understanding from the original meetings with the, with the Planning Board, I know the Planning Board has changed since then. My only waiver that I requested on the actual plans was for Cape Cod berm up into the circle. There was, there was arguments or discussions, whatever, with the town that it was rolled up in the decision that there was curbing. So we took out, we took out the curbing. Or should we say, we took out the Cape Cod berm and replaced it with curbing. And that is my understanding of the last, the last work that I had to do as far as the road was concerned.
Now, Bill, you have...
As far as the trees, I'm not aware of. I haven't seen any reports. I haven't seen anything in regard to the, any reports that have been presented to the board on the trees. The trees were the only work. The request of the planning and the Brush Hill Association at the time was to keep, keep the trees and move the road, and that's what I agreed to do. The road was pushed over to the left of the trees, and the trees were preserved. The only work that was done to the Beechwood was done by my tree person, but it was at the request of the resident. He requested to prune the tree when he was also pruning other trees in the back. And he, he requested for the Beechwood to be pruned. I was at the property last week with my engineer, just looking at the road to see what his interpretation of the road is, and he also looked at the trees. I looked at the big Beechwood, and the Beechwood, there is one branch of the Beechwood that seems, appears to be some disease on that particular branch, which he said is pretty familiar with Beechwoods. I can't tell whether that's true or not, I'm not sure, but that was his comment to me on the tree. During the construction at the time of the houses, there was no work in the area of the trees. In fact, there's probably more work over the last two years in and around the tree from the actual resident at the area with his landscaping. Because the only thing I didn't, the resident that, that purchased the property, he, my specs were to hydroseed. He actually put in sod at his request, and his people put, put the sod in. They, to be honest, in my opinion, there's been more work with the landscapers in and around the tree. And with trees anyway, not just the Beechwood, any tree in particular, if you take, first of all, you take any trees surrounding that, you're also affecting the tree. I'm in the middle of a project at the moment where we're removing trees, and there's, we're, I've worked with the Hingham Planning Board in doing the tree preservation, and the same with this project. When you take a number of trees out and you change the landscape of that particular area, there is going to be an effect on the, the existing trees that are still there. At the time, prior to any development, I had an arborist go there, which was Hunt. I'm not sure what the, what the company, the name of the company is. He went, and we visited the trees. He said this prob, in my recollection, I'm not 100% sure, because it's about three, maybe three and a half years ago, if not actually more. And his recollection was the tree was in tough shape, the two, three, specifically the Beechwood. And I think it was probably 10 to 20 years left in the tree. It is an old tree, so I haven't had an arborist look at it as of yet. I was just requested by a phone call from Mr. Clark to, to be present here at a meeting, and I came to the meeting last, two weeks ago. I was late, but it was adjourned, and he asked me to come here this evening, so...
And here you are.
Here I am, yeah. Just, I mean, the two trees that are in question, they were preserved. In fact, the comments that I've had from a lot of people is, it made the project.
It what?
It made the project. The tree's a beautiful tree. And I cannot, the arborist report that was there, which I haven't looked at, I haven't seen, that's probably in the last two to three months. That arborist didn't look at it three, four years ago, so he's not aware of the condition, what the condition has changed. So I can't see how they can determine when there was no work in the area, whether, they're trying to implicate whether I did damage to the trees.
But your view is that you were pretty careful.
Yeah, there was no work done in the road that was put in and the pavement beside it. There was no real excavation for the pavement. The only excavation at the end of the day was for the curb, which was outside the pavement. So I cannot sit here and turn around and tell you that when we were doing the road, that there was no roots that were damaged or not. You know, I can't, the road is outside the span of the tree, so I don't know.
You dug according to the plan.
It's okay for somebody to come, you know, three years later and look at a tree and say, "Okay, this tree is amateur, it doesn't have too much life left." But I can't see how they can determine when they didn't look at it three and a half years ago, what the condition was three and a half years ago.
And your recollection is that three and a half years ago, the Beech Tree was not in particularly good shape?
No, not in particularly great shape, but the, the request of the planning board, I mean, I believe you were probably the only member on the planning board at the time. The request of the planning board was to put the road outside of the tree. The previous developer that had worked through the project prior to me was wanting to take the trees down, and I think his implication was that the trees were damaged, and they weren't. But I worked with the planning board at their request to move the, move the road outside. The actual, I can't say exactly, because I haven't looked at the plan in, in a while, but my belief is that the actual Beechwood is not even on the property of the resident at number three Beechwood. I believe it's the property of the owner, because part of the owner on number four Beechwood, which is Lot 6, actually owns a part of the property on the other side of the road.
So, Bill, do we know the, we know the right owner, don't we?
I think the Beech Tree is actually in the, it's in the fee, the roadway fee.
It's in the roadway.
In the roadway. In the fee for the roadway.
In the fee, in the layout.
Fee for the roadway, actually, yes. And it looks like it is the lawn for three.
It look, it appears that it belongs to three, and part of, the part of the landscaping area of the resident at three is actually owned by Lot 6, which is number, number four Beechwood, the second house on the left.
We have a question.
Did you take any measures? Did you describe any measures that you took to protect the tree?
The span of the tree is probably about 30 to 40 feet. There's absolutely no work. Did I put any protection on the bark of the tree? No, I didn't.
Or even so that equipment wouldn't be parked there?
Wouldn't be parked in that area at all.
There's no piles of dirt or anything that would suffocate the roots?
No, I mean, the tree was in pretty bad shape, as is, and the tree where the old house was, was almost at the foundation of the old house. So we took the foundation of the old house out. And that was probably the extent of the work that I did in around the tree.
So the Beech Tree that is there was, I couldn't remember, the Beech Tree that's there is the, is the tree that was up against the burned house?
Yeah, yeah. Beech Tree was up against the burnt house.
Okay.
And my engineer's not an arborist, and I can, I can get an arborist there and take a look, but, and I can revisit with Mr. Hunt. But my recollection of my visit with, prior to any construction, it was actually during the process, of the planning process, my recollection of, that the trees are in tough, they are in tough shape. But it would be a pity, in my, my view, to take them down. You know? I think there's still probably 10 to 20 years left in the tree.
Right, other questions on the tree? Now, Bill, on the road, what do you, what is the problem with the road, as you understand it?
The curbing is incorrectly, the...
Is incorrectly?
The curbing was ta, the curbing has slope granite curbing. What Mr. Rankin wanted was a Cape Cod berm. What DPW wanted was straight granite. What DPW allowed was the slope granite. There is slope granite in there. The issue that DPW, that engineering has with it right now is that the storm drains are about six inches away from the curbing. So when it rains, water goes down the curbing, it doesn't hit the, it does not hit the catch basin, and therefore passes on to the next house. That's their issue.
Does it go out to Brush Hill Road, or does it eventually make it into the system?
Part of it goes on to one of the properties. The rest of it makes it into the system.
So what's the fix? Is the fix moving all the catch basins, or one of the catch basins?
It's moving all the catch basins back that six inches.
But the catch basins were installed to the specs, and now we're approved.
So either the curbing isn't in the right place, or the catch basin's not in the right place. And that's not, that's not, well, it's one or the other that has to go back to the engineers. And the engineer, our engineer is saying no.
Our engineer is saying, no, the curbing, the catch basin is in the wrong place.
Yes.
So that's what our engineer says. Maybe you could take a look at this.
Has your, I can address it with Mr. Thompson? I have put in a phone call to Mr. Thompson. I have not got a response.
Well, ultimately, though, is this...
The decision actually says, under curbing, "The slope granite curbing, as shown on the plan, provides for long-term, stable roadway edge, and it is satisfactory." So that's, that's in the, that's in the decision.
All I was going to say is, I think he complied with our plan. The question is if he put the, it's just a matter of evaluating whether he did it according to the plan or not. I'm not sure the, the Planning Board doesn't have a discretionary, or it doesn't have an enforcement issue here, as usual.
Well, but there is, there, you see, there's a bond, and at some point, the board releases the bond. Don't we release the bond?
We do not. The building inspector and the town engineer do.
Yep, all right. But we would like to see the road completed.
There's nothing in your regulations, by the way, regarding bonds or request of bonds. It's just on the, on the sale of the last house, they asked me to put up some money, and I did. But there's absolutely nothing in your regulations to request a bond.
But doesn't our decision ask for a bond?
No.
No, we weren't doing that yet.
No bond in your decision, no. So there's nothing, there was not, which I was very surprised with, to be honest, and I did have a conversation with Mr. Thompson regarding that, so...
Well, have a conversation with him about the catch basins.
Okay.
Because we'd like to get this done, yes.
Could the, could the flow of the water from the catch basin have anything to do with damage to the roots?
No. Entirely different.
It's all in the, it's all in the roadway.
Trees here, road and catch basin down here.
The installation of the road may have something to do with the roots, but the, the road, in my opinion, the asphalt, I mean, the road was kept outside the span of the tree. So I can't say that there was no roots. I can't tell you exactly that there was no roots that came into the, into the roadway, but we kept the road outside the span of the tree. And there was no excavation work, other than paving on the, on the, on the walkway to the, to the right of the roadway as you're going up.
So there was something about a tree management plan on this property, right? Was there, was there a tree management plan that was followed? Did you have a...
There was a tree management plan for this. One of the pieces in there was that there be a, be an arborist. Although the arborist started, the arborist never finished. They did not, he wasn't getting paid, he didn't finish.
What was he supposed to do? He was supposed to monitor the process.
I...
Well, like, we'll take a look at that.
Too long ago, I need to look.
Okay.
I think that's why we, we had these questions, because there was a tree management plan that didn't seem to have been followed, and, and there were dead trees now, and we...
There's the tree management plan. Tell me when you're ready. I just passed the part that said there's a, the arborist there. The arborist, Cheryl?
Actually, there was less work, there was less work done in the area of the trees than was actually noted on the plans, because the wall, there was a wall
The roadway is owned by whom at this point? The condo association?
Not yet until I...
Oh, it's owned by you?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're still the owner. So this is one of your obligations. All right, well, I think that we have the information, and we should, we should consider it. But I don't think that, I don't think we'll consider it tonight. So, but thank you for coming in, it was useful. And you'll probably hear from us...
Okay.
...in the not-too-distant future. So thanks.
Okay.
We all set?
Yep.
All right, now...
That one has not needed a cross, right, Cheryl?
Sorry?
That's coming over here now.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted Denny to read a further amendment that I put on it. And so Alex, you should take a quick look at that, too.
Where is it?
It's in pencil, in the middle there.
I think that's fine. I think that's probably why they want to move it. So we're almost ready, I think, to do the, we can launch into the next hearing, but I would like to do the minutes. Do you think we can do the minutes?
Go ahead. You want to start them?
I don't have the dates. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October 12, 2017, October 23, 2017, and October 16, 2017. And this is up to 16, and that's it.
I'll second.
As amended?
Oh, yes, as amended. Oh, yes, as amended, yep. The 12th, 16th, and the 23rd of October, as amended.
Which should be September, should be September, right? There should be a September 28th from there, too. Somebody have--
Okay, let's repeat the dates again.
September 28, October 12, October 16, October 23, all of 2017, as amended.
Anything else, Julia, that you need? That's it? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I think that we're, except for some 2014 minutes, which--
I still need to look at.
You are going to look at, or not, or, but we're going to, we're going to try and do those next time. Now, we have a hearing on site plan approval at 475 Adams Street, and-- as you may recall, we had a preliminary hearing on site plan approval on this matter, and we advertised it in the newspaper, and we had a hearing. And at the hearing, all but one person spoke in favor of the plan. So, we sent some recommendations about design, because we're not here to approve the plan. What our, what site plan approval is, is assuming that you can build the building that they want to build, what should it look like? How should it be sighted? How should it be landscaped? How should the parking be provided? How should entry and exits be addressed? All the details on what makes a project work, but the approval of the project itself is a matter for the Board of Appeals. And Bill, you have, I think, a report on what happened at the Board of Appeals last night.
I do. The Board of Appeals met last night to, they've been asked to provide a change of use and I'm not sure how many, I think two variances. And last night's hearing was to address the issue of traffic and parking. The traffic issue was one of sighting of the driveway and access to the property. The Board had previously heard, heard testimony of our site, about the building, about the reuse. The zoning board had a letter of support from the selectmen, they had a letter of support from the Planning Board. They did take into account the issues that were discussed by the Planning Board towards the design, the proposed design changes to the building that could make it more historical in, than the nature of the original presentation. They're willing, the planning, zoning board is willing to issue the change of use if the planning, if the Planning Board does a site plan approval with a very specific decision. That decision will be directly put into the zoning board's change of use and variance decision.
Okay. So what--
Perhaps I can clarify that a little bit?
Oh, yeah, we, we, indeed you can, but just let me wrap this up as best I can. So what we're doing tonight is talking about how this building, we're talking about the sighting of the building, we're talking about the landscaping of the building, we're talking about the design of the building, we're talking about the parking, we're talking about the buffers, we're talking about the driveway, we're talking about the entry and exit, but we're not talking about whether or not approving this project is something we should do, because it's not our job to approve the project. It's our job to make this project as good a project as it can be, and then it will be up to the Board of Appeals. So, Mr. Corcoran, why don't you make a presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Ned Corcoran, here with Steve Conley, who's the principal in 131 Elliott Street LLC, which is the owner of the property and the applicant. So let me add a little bit of color to what happened with the Board of Appeals. We had two nights of hearing. First night was a couple of weeks ago, since we were before the Planning Board, and we were back last night with specific issues raised about traffic and access to the site. The conclusion of which, the Board voted that it would approve the variances for the use change and the setbacks requested, subject to this Board working with us to develop a definitive site plan with specific conditions associated with the development of that site plan, and with a condition that based on the recent recommendation of the Chiefs of Police and Fire and the Safety, Traffic Safety Officer, working with Bill this week, that the site driveway be moved from one side of the property to the other. So-- And the determination, as I understand it, is based on a question of safety. We had, so what I have here is, just for discussion, and I'll hand out some copies, is a two-year-old site plan that we started with, when we started initial conversations with the neighborhood two years ago. We stopped after two meetings with the neighborhood, because they made it very clear that they were opposed to the project. As I said to the Board last night, we never discussed alternatives, other than single family, which Conley's were not going to do. There was testimony last night from the traffic consultant--
Thank you, thank you.
--that traffic from a single-family use is actually more impactful than traffic from a small office use and a couple of small apartments, because of the come and go that generally happens in a single-family type of situation. In any case, in any case, the traffic volumes are very, very low and they can be handled, they can be handled adequately. The issue became where to cite the driveway, because-- as you come off of the Wood Street extension, some portion of the traffic will come from East Milton, will cross over the Wood Street extension. At that point, you take a right towards St. Agatha Church, you take a left back towards the expressway, and so-- So the-- This is the site, it's this triangle here, that's the existing driveway. We had proposed moving the driveway here. And the reason why we had proposed moving it there was to eliminate, or try to eliminate as much as possible, a traffic move that, you know, if someone's coming off and they want to get to this property, they logically are going to come here, and we want to give them the ability to do this, similar to the way that Jubenville traffic happens. Ninety-eight percent of the traffic coming off of this is making some move in this direction. They may be going into the bank and maybe going back that way, but most of it's going here, 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 and the expressway south. And it's merging across traffic that's coming up from Adams Street. What the traffic consultant said is that because of the light at Brook, there are actually long breaks in the traffic that gives this traffic time to merge across, but people get antsy here. So the question was safe access to the site. We wanted it here largely because if somebody's making that move and they miss it, they're coming through the neighborhood and around and in. Or perhaps they would do some sort of an illegal left to come in, and we just didn't think that was appropriate. What the, what the police and the fire chief said, and Bill can confirm, is that given the very periodic, occasional vehicle that might come across, the impact to the neighborhood from a traffic perspective is worth the safety of someone making a mistake and coming across and trying to make that cut across too quickly. So based on that, one of the key, one of the criteria that, that the Board of Appeals voted last night was that the driveway needs to be over here. And so we need to redesign the site, because our site plan had us entering from here. Now, that's a 2015 version of a site plan that we had. It's the only one that we have that shows an access to the right side. It needs work, it shows 12 spaces, I've circled and put a couple of Xs in. We only need 10, that's what's being approved.
Question, Alex?
Yes.
So how does one maneuver coming to the site if they do come off of that extension? Going around the neighborhood?
Well, they come all the way across and they go around through the neighborhood.
Okay. So one plan that we had looked at had had, I think, this coming all the way out here at an angle, right? Which was a concern we had about the angle, right? Yeah.
There was one that we had, and our concern at the time, going forward with that, was how do they get to that? That they're coming across from Wood Street. And my concern was, they're going through the neighborhood. And there's already concern in the neighborhood about traffic and volumes of traffic, and we didn't want to push that. So that was not our decision. That's a decision of the public safety officials to push that, and so we'll live with that. And so based on that, we need to go back to some version of the site plan. How to, you know, whether that, that first plan that we, that you saw, where the, it's sort of a diagonal out that needs to be turned, because you need to stack and have a good line of sight before you can make the turn onto Adams Street.
Sorry, say that again? You wanted to change this?
No, this, there was one, there was another one that you saw where it came over here.
Yeah, that was a problem.
Right. And so this is an earlier--
You want to work with something like this in terms of how it comes out?
Question is, where does it go? How wide is it? This shows 24 feet, you probably only need 17 feet, that would create seven more feet of green space. You know, where does it want to go? And we need to sort that out, based on last night's decision, we obviously haven't had time to address it. So we wanted to, we thought tonight, based on the fact that we only got the yes last night, that tonight would be an important opportunity to spend time with you, just to think about those issues, to think about more specifically materials, designs for the front of the building, other landscaping things that you want to make sure that we're doing before we start to put, you know, time and effort into the development of new plans. The Planning, the Board of Appeals continued its hearing until January 9. Assuming that this Board would meet on November 9, December 14, December 28, maybe more in between, but I think those are your official dates, so that there would be enough time in there for us to get to a good, good site plan, and then go back to the, go back to the Board of Appeals to approve the variance with the conditions and with the, with the detailed site plan that gets developed, and then come back here and have you vote the final site plan approval after they get the variance. You can't vote for site plan approval until a variance gets approved.
But they're going to include--
They'll include your conditions.
--the site plan approval that we haven't approved.
Correct.
And if we don't approve it, then of course, nothing happens, but they're not going to say you can change it further.
No. And, that's right, and they want this body to come back, us to work with you, to come back to them with a site plan that works for the site. What they have said, and it was very important that they do it, is that they will grant the variances for the use change and for the setbacks pending that outcome, because if they weren't prepared to vote yes on the use, we didn't need to waste anybody's time, including this Board's time. So that was, that was the, that's the outcome of, from last night. It just happened, as I said, last night. And so what we'd like to do is take on as much comment as we can from you, so that when we come back on the 9th, we'll come back with some, some iterations of plans that make sense, but that as responsive as possible, and when we find them as we get to December, and hopefully by the meeting on the 28th, you voted a set of conditions, the site plan is good, and go to the Board of Appeals on January 9th, they vote yes, incorporate your considerations into their decision, and we come back here at the end of January and we--
Well, there are a number of people here, and we're going to want to hear from them before we, before we go much further. In fact, my feeling is that it might be well to start hearing from the public now, rather than-- I think that's what we'll do. So, we have an application for site plan approval for a mixed-use building containing two commercial units. We have a picture of it, you might as well put up the, the basic picture of that, more or less what it will--
The one thing that we did do since we were last before you, is we have, we have a schematic of a design that has a much wider porch opening. Change that nose, and we have a schematic of that.
And the wider porch is because--
Wider porch breaks up the ma, is intended to break up the mass, mass of metal. Other issues about--
Why don't you show the wider porch?
I don't have it on--
If you don't, all right, well, there is a-- All right, so in any event, this is more or less what you're asking for with, I mean, what I would say just initially is that the shutters are going to be made of wood and not plastic screwed on to the sides of the building. That's just, but I, I mean, it's comments like that, if people, big, small, whatever the comments, we're prepared to hear them. But try and, try and focus on the project itself, rather than whether or not the Board of Appeals should approve it or deny it. Try and address what you find, what you'd like to see here, what you'd like to see in this design, bearing in mind that it will be a, a mixed-use building with a couple of commercial units on the ground floor, and I gather there for office space and not retail space.
There was, I forgot that, there was a clear determination that it would be professional office space.
Professional office space, so that might be a doctor's office, it might be a dentist's office.
Might be a lawyer's office, an engineer's office, accountant, but it would be a professional office, it's not just other general office.
Right, and it wouldn't be retail--
There would be no lottery tickets and--
As you know, this is a residence district, and in a residence district, permanent signs are not allowed, and so this building would not have signs on the face of the building, but we might, we might recommend something, something else, but we would want it to be unobtrusive. We don't want this to be people driving by, looking and seeing a big sign saying, whatever, and saying, oh, I think I'll go in here. We want it to be a destination that people know they want to go to before they start out. So, who wants to be heard on this?
Can I, can I say one thing before you get--
You may say as many things as you like.
I think Ned should actually tell you about the technical memorandum that came from Jack Gillan. You all have a copy of it. It actually has the ITE numbers, the--
Have we posted it on our website?
No, we, I'm giving it to you and then we'll put this stuff up.
Okay.
This has the, it has the GAP study information, it has the ITE numbers, which is the Institute of Transportation Engineers data on-- It has the ITE numbers, which is the Institute of Transportation Engineers' data on who would be using the building and what the traffic in and out of the building would be. It talks about a, two professional offices with two, two units, two residential units above, and he did this in comparison to two single-family homes. So, you come up with less usage with this building than you do for two single-family homes. But there's the, that's the report that was given to the ZBA last night.
So, it's basically the total volume and the peak hour. The peak hour was defined as 4:15 to 5:15 in the evening. There's a total of two trips in in the morning, well, in the morning peak, there would be two trips in for the, in the peak hour. Morning peak hour, there'd be two trips out, and the evening peak hour associated with the office use and the residential use, there would be one peak trip out in the morning and one peak trip in in the afternoon peak. He sat there for the hour on a Wednesday afternoon for the hour 4:15 to 5:15, and he watched the traffic, and he measured the gaps that occurred as the lights at Brook Road changed and allowed platoons to come through. The gaps were pretty significant. The gap is on the last page. He timed the length of gaps at the time when gaps were happening. So, at 4:15, there was a 50-second gap in traffic. 4:17, there was a 40-second gap. 4:19, there was a 56-second gap. So, there were long gaps in the traffic associated with traffic coming easterly on Adam Street from, from west of, west of Adams and/or from Brook Road, but west of the site. So, that's a no.
And I see that he says, leave the driveway where it is, but the Board of Appeals said, change it.
That's right. Based on, the Board of Appeals, well, the Board of Appeals made their decision based on the recommendation of the public safety officials who made the determination, as represented last night, that an occasional trip through the neighborhood was preferable to the, someone who is unfamiliar with the, with the site trying to cross over three lanes of traffic from the Wood Road extension. So, that, we certainly, I can tell you from the, from the property owner's perspective, we would never have proposed that. But it's the outcome that the town preferred, so, you know, we're ambivalent.
Of course.
So, I just have a quite curious, curious question. I'm looking at this letter that is in our packet dated October 25th.
That was considered last night.
Right, understood. So, this is a variance application. At the ZBA, at our town meeting the other night, there was a lot of discussion about variances versus special permits, and some of them, the ZBA spoke for a couple of minutes. I'm just, I'm a little surprised that there's this much opposition and a, and a variance being granted, even if these people have standing. I'm just curious.
Yeah, they all have standing. So, what I, so, I spoke to that last night, and the chairman spoke very eloquently in his determinations to why he was supporting the variance. Until last night, in response to that letter, we have never discussed any uses for the property other than what's proposed and single-family. We tried to sell that to the neighborhood. They weren't buying. We went through the demolition delay process with the historical commission. Once we got through that, we refiled. What I said to, what I said last night is that if the variance, I said, we didn't consider other things because we didn't want, I didn't want to use any hammer to force this, but the two other uses that would be logical, other than single-family, which we weren't going to do, are preschool, which is allowed as of right under the Dover Amendment and would blow up traffic at that location. Morning drop-off and pickup, and afternoon pickup, and all that stuff. Not the right location for it, but we've been contacted, and we're negotiating at one point with a preschool operator who outgrown her site and wanted to go there. Second is multifamily with some density, whether it's by variance at 10 to 15 or 20% of affordability, or it's 25% affordability, affordability and 40B, you're looking at 12 to 16-plus units. That's a big building. That's a lot more traffic. Not to go there. John Leonard, the chair, specifically spoke to that issue. He said, it is the logical alternative. It is not the right place for it, and it's no way that it wouldn't get approved. So, he said, be careful what you wish for because you might end up with something worse than what's being proposed. And based on that and a lot of other things, he made a very strong recommendation to the other two members who accepted his recommendation, that this was the appropriate use for the site, particularly because we've been before this board, and this board had written a letter, and we've been to the selectmen, and the selectmen had supported it favorably. The two elected boards had both supported this approach over a single-family approach, and that they as an appointed board, but not to second-guess the judgment of the elected board. And so, I think, based on all of that, you know, the board, you know, they arrived at the outcome, and it's obviously public testimony, but that essentially was the outcome that they arrived at, that this was appropriate, that they would support it, subject to the work that this body needs to do relative to how the site plan worked.
All right. Now, Mr. Clark, you have another.
Thank you. One of the things that kind of goes with what Mr. Corcoran just said, and that is past uses of the building. There are five cases that have gone before the zoning Board of Appeals, before Mr. Corcoran's presentation, and I actually asked Lauren to look those up today, and she's going to give you a synopsis of what those approvals were, or I think it's one denial, four approvals.
Okay.
So, beginning in 1962, there was an application for temporary use of a medical facility on the first floor with a rental unit above. It was approved, given unusual circumstances. In this case, back then, these type of variances were typically approved if a doctor was living in the unit that their office would be in. In this case, the doctor was not planning on living in the rental unit. He was going to rent it. There was no commercial use involved. It was only professional, so it was, it was approved on those circumstances. It was a temporary solution. He had planned to move his office into another building nearby once it was ready. In 1970, he came back and applied for a special permit or a variance for permanent use of that medical facility. It was denied at that point. However, it was, it was reluctantly denied. They, the conditions that they had applied for the permanent were no longer met, so they, they couldn't find those conditions to apply to the circumstance. It was, they thought that it would, they would allow a reasonable amount of time for him to terminate his business and move to another facility. In 1972, he came back, had applied another variance for permanent use. There was no opposition from the neighborhood at this time. It was the same issues as 1970. However, there is the issue found that there is substantial hardship, that the disruption of his business would, would be a hardship for not only him, but also the community uprooting the medical facility. So, it was approved in 1972. In 1986, there was a, an application, the same doctor's office was looking to establish a physical therapy, which would be a more intensive use. There was vocal opposition to that more intensive use, and they were, the application was withdrawn without prejudice. Finally, in 1987, they came back. At this point, the doctor had been at that location for 25 years with his practice. He was retiring. He had entered into a sale and purchase agreement with the condition to obtain the approvals from the zoning Board of Appeals. They found that since there was no increase in intensity of the use, it was a transfer to doctors of similar practice, the only major change would be to add a handicap ramp. They found that although the premise was located on the most heavily traveled portion of Adam Street, and though it was owned for residential, its highest and best use would be limited for a professional practice such as medicine. And they found that over the past 25 years, that not that it had not derogated from the intent and purpose of the zoning, and in fact, had been a benefit to public good. So, it was approved at that time.
I just was looking at the existing condition site plan, and the current driveway is closer to where you, we last saw it and last discussed it. I'm assuming that people accessed that driveway when there was a doctor's office and a dentist's office here. Is there any, in the public safety side, are there records of, there being accidents in this location as a result of the location of that driveway?
There are apparently records of accidents at where Wood Road enters into Adam Street. People edging out and they're not, and some...
There's more rear-end accidents in the queuing that takes place on Wood Road Extension. You have so many people coming down Wood Road, which would be the portion of the road to the north versus the one that comes from the south, which would be emptying the square to come to the other side of town. As people come across and they use that, they take that left-hand turn.
Yeah.
It's a single lane, and because of that single lane, the police chief, the fire chief, the safety officer, and myself felt that you're sitting there waiting, and during those peak times, you're waiting for that light down the street to change. The problem is, I'm stacking all those cars behind me. So, people are getting impatient, and there are more accidents there. We did not...
Talking about this way further, right, towards?
Yes, on the, on the ramp.
On the ramp, right. I was just curious about, because that driveway had been there, and it had been that type of use for so many years, whether it had, whether there had really been a record of a problem there or for anticipating a problem.
We were only looking for them from that ramp. We felt that there was the potential to take and move the driveway so that it is buffered by the island, the pedestrian island there. Put it opposite the pedestrian island, and you can come in. Taking this design of the old building, there was still enough room to get in and go behind the building before the plan that is on the board right now.
We, our assumption was that that's how people were used to getting in and out of that site, you know, going to the doctor's office. We were moving the driveway 10 or 15 feet further to the east.
Right.
Slightly safer than the existing condition, that that was appropriate. Mr. Gillan opined that that was appropriate, but the, the public safety officials prefer the driveway on the other side of the property. That's, we're ambivalent on that issue, and the, and the Board of Appeals, particularly Mr. Mullin, who was focused on that issue, made that a condition of their approval, that that's where the site entry would be.
All right. Who would like to be heard on this, this matter? Who in the audience? Who, come on up.
I'm Joe Neil, and I live in Precinct 7. I'm a member of the East Milton Neighborhood Association and a longtime member of the Historical Commission. Two things. First of all, we didn't endorse this, but we really liked the way it looked. There was a meeting at East Congregational Church, and it was well-presented, and we were glad to see it. The only thing I want to point out, if you have this picture, or you have it, good. Is that because I'm holding it?
No.
You can imagine what I'm...
But that would be cool, wouldn't it?
Okay. The only thing, if you look at that picture, maybe you won't.
You put it down.
If you look at that picture, you'll notice a number of parking space in front. Now, I assume that you're going to pick out the safest way to exit and enter the driveway. I did go to Dr. McGol for years, but if you notice all this parking space in front, if you haven't heard, there is a parking issue in East Milton Square, and the issue goes as far as here. People want to go to the post office. What I would encourage is that Mr. Conley and whoever designed it, that they somehow figure it away so the people that are entering and exiting the building, go, don't come from the main street because they're going to park in front. That's just, maybe you put a wall up. I don't know what you do. Maybe the sidewalk goes to the side. Whatever you think, I encourage you to do that so the parking spaces out front are not taken. That's all. I hadn't seen this till today, and it looks good.
If they created two additional spots on their own land to replace those, that might work.
Anything you can do to help. I mean, as you know, they, if they're looking for seven spaces over the highway and everything else, it's pretty tough.
But one of the things that will, that will happen is that when you close the existing curb cut, you've got one or two spaces there. The new curb cut, where we, where we, you're just changing a curb cut. You're not losing spaces. You're just changing the location.
Well, I mean, we'll, we'll see what, how that works.
Thank you.
When we see it. Okay. So, you like this basic design?
We like the looks of it, yes. That was, and I talked to members of the board and the neighbors. I, I know there is neighborhood opposition somewhat, maybe less than when Tom and Yo had it. I don't know. But, you know, just the general appearance, it at least fits with the Juvenville buildings and others. You know, I'm at a point where, you know, do I prefer a fan U-Haul or a city U-Haul? And I think the answer is obvious. You know, do I prefer this town hall, the police station, or the library? And again, the answer is obvious. We, we have to conform to what the town looks like. We are a town. That's all. I didn't mean to get, I wanted to really talk about...
All right, we have a question for you.
I have a question. I just want to clarify. So, your, your concern is that people who patronize this office aren't parking in the designated office space in the back, but instead on the street? And you want to avoid that? Is that...
I want people that are going to live there or use the offices, I want the construction set to where that the people that are using the building use the parking lot out front.
Right, okay. That's right.
As you probably know, on Central Avenue, you, I don't know if you got complaints, but some of the residents pack out front. Well, if you're going in, you know, going in and out at noon time, you're going, it's much easier to park out front than out back. And so, we have to figure, you have to figure it away, or people have to figure it away to encourage people and make it impossible to enter the front door. Am I clear?
Yes.
Okay, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can cite the main entry to the office space, I guess, to be to the rear. Or maybe not.
Well...
I mean, it, it seems that we, we need to have, we need to have, to know what the rear is going to look like because we've got to know about people going upstairs and people accessing these offices. But I assumed that it was from the parking lot.
Well...
What?
Yeah, there, there's an, there's an interior layout, except with the plans which would...
The apartments go in the back. There are assistant area doors in the back for the offices.
There are 10, but there are 10 parking spaces on the site which are, you know, compliant with zoning. We think more than adequate, but we anticipate the needs of the building to be, but they are compliant with zoning.
I mean, if we're talking about historic context, buildings usually front the street with their entrances, and, you know, a pedestrian who may, may be coming here, not parking in the parking lot would certainly, we, it would be obvious that you'd want to be able to enter from the sidewalk in a traditional kind of village that people are interested in having atmosphere. So, I would suggest that, you know, you could keep your access from the back, but that you'd want the entrance really to appear to be from the front.
We could certainly suggest very...
That would encourage people to park in front because it would be a much quicker shot to get in.
I mean, that's one of the problems with moving this driveway, is it's going to be a lot easier to park on the street than it is to go around the neighborhood or get off at exit 11 and come down and go over the bridge and take the left. So, I think giving some thought to require employees and residents to park in the parking field is going to be important.
Yeah. It's hard to enforce it, though.
It's, of course, it's hard to enforce, but there's a, but there are mechanisms to enforce that, and then visitors, you can, you know... that and then visitors you can, you know, be able to enforce. And frankly, because of that driveway condition, you're probably going to have visitors parking on the street because it's going to prove to be easier.
Well, you're going to have a number of ADA issues, if that's right, I would think.
That's a good point. Your ADA will be in the back, your ADA access will be around the sidewalk coming through parking spaces in the back that they're showing as ADA, I assume.
So that's the I mean, if you have an ADA compliant entry at the back there, that will be take the pressure off because people parking in the parking lot will use it. So, okay, who else wants to be heard on this? All right, well, yes, sir. We outweighed you. Come on up.
Hi.
Hi.
I live at 16 slash 18 Babcock, right behind this property. In thinking about landscape, if you go back to the picture, the rendering you have that we were just looking at, those trees behind the building will be gone as it stands now. As so we're just we're concerned, my my mother and father-in-law, my wife, the neighbors, are concerned with large trees as they protect against, you know, sound, maybe, I don't know, pollution, et cetera. I don't know, will those trees be there? Will that look like that when it's done? You know, that's a concern that.
I think that those are conceptual, but we've talked we've talked spruces. And that what is the name of those spruces that have grown so fast and grow so big?
Norwegian Norwegian spruce.
Norwegian spruces.
Huge, though. The rights they they get, I mean, they might be kind of big for it. But if I if I look at the.
You were saying they might be big.
For a five-foot buffer. Depends on how big the buffer is.
Well, this is in back. This is this is where the barn is, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so.
I mean, when the barn goes, there'll be plenty of room for some big, fast-growing trees that come right down.
When you say fast-growing, what are you talking, like 10 years? Because I don't I'm not sure a tree can grow very fast.
What is the I mean, these are.
So the trees over on Harland where the spruces that he planted over there are huge now.
Yeah, well.
That was three years ago.
I mean, my sense is, looking at the survey here of the existing condition, location of the barn, the location of the parking lot in this plan, where the building and the parking lot are 10 feet off the property line and the barn probably in the location of this portion of the parking lot, I think there's probably some trees on that property lines back there that are giving you those.
Right. One of the issues to be one of the issues with respect to this plan is it was drawn before we shrunk the size of the parking lot in response to the issues that came up last time, is that the that driveway aisle is 25 feet wide, not 22 feet wide, and those spaces are 19 feet, not 18 feet. So we.
They'll get more room.
They'll get more room. The barn, one of the issues with respect to the to the trees, two there are two trees that are proximate to the barn, is when the barn comes down, what happens to the roots and root system and do those trees have to come with it? And what do we replace them with?
Well. Is there an arborist that can tell us that?
Frank, can you pass that back for a sec? What I want to point out is that the prior site plan that we looked at, which we thought would have the benefit in terms of the traffic flow, but it did have the drive very close to the property line here, which meant that if there were trees along here, that, you know, they wouldn't obviously be able to stay in the way the parking lot's laid out. But if, in fact, there's a 10-foot setback or buffer like this, some of those trees may fall within there and 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 may be able to be kept, some of the ones that you're talking about. The question then becomes whether the ones by the barn, no, okay. But I would say that this plan has the potential to save some trees that are that are visible, maybe in the background in that photo, because they probably are at prop close to the property line.
I think there's an elevation issue back there.
It's lower?
No, it's higher in the back than it is in the front. Does it go up?
Well, I mean, if it's.
Six feet?
If it's higher than.
Goes up about six feet from the street to the back property line.
So the shorter trees would be good or bad?
Depends if they're going to take and try to level the lot and bring the lot down, then you'd lose those trees.
I think the idea is that you'll 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 lower the lot with a retaining wall around the.
But if I'm looking at this proposed plan before, there's these dash line or there's dotted lines which shows where the barn was or is now, and the parking lot's actually further away from the neighbors from the edge of the barn. And potentially with this one, it looks even further away. So I think it would be great if when you do this site plan, you know, it's just to dash in where the the barn is now so we can have an idea relative to and then with the new parking lot, smaller lot based on the smaller dimensions for the aisle.
What was the size of the spruces that we were talking about in that other development?
I just did a quick Google and the Norway spruce can grow two to three feet a year depending on the conditions of the soil and the water and or.
There were 14 footers, 14 to 16 footers.
It would.
Those are big.
It could be if the conditions are bad, it would be one foot per year. But they they're pretty big. I mean, you might have a better idea of what you want there, but they mature 40 to 60 feet with a spread of 25 to 30. That might be too big.
Probably just a little.
Or I don't know. Do you have?
The concern I heard from Mr. Stock was about the Blue Hill Bank sign.
Yeah.
And when the building with this redesign, with the driveway on the other side, the building is actually going to be 10 feet off the lot line, which is going to buffer much more than any tree you put there.
Right.
It's going to be a building. Yeah.
So that you'd be looking you'd be looking at the building.
This one, the second?
Exactly.
Yes.
We'll be looking at the building now.
So what the building looks like is important.
Yes.
Oh, and that's all. Okay.
Is there any?
I see.
I haven't been out ever walked the site. I don't understand the elevation change and I have no idea what the structure looks like. But is there any opportunity to keep that barn for an indoor parking space in the residence?
Oh.
No, okay.
But I I mean, landscaping is important and we're going to if those trees seem to be healthy and salvageable, we're going to want them salvaged. But the you were here, were you here when they discussed the beech tree next to the burnt house? I don't know. That was occurred a little earlier this evening. When you when you take a building down, it can it can impact the the trees next to it.
Bill, could you open an aerial for a second? I think the point about how the building is oriented against Blue Hill Bank, I'd just like to see it from an aerials.
Right now, Brian, the the building is perpendicular to the street.
Right.
So you're saying that the building will now be here?
Yes.
Which will really screen any of these any of these homes, either of those ones, from seeing across to the commercial area now. And our neighbor, Mr. Juvenville, wants those screened in the area. It's a detriment to his property and I want to move as well.
Along the property line?
The barn is right there. The barn they're talking about is right here. So there's a tree here, there's a tree here.
Did you have trees in mind or?
We might specify, but we will for the next meeting.
Okay, great.
I just had a secondary question. Will there be decks or anything on the second floor, you know, elevated?
I haven't looked at that. Well, I think we will. We will know. You're suggesting that you don't particularly want people sitting on a deck looking.
Into my backyard. Correct.
But I think that that's a reasonable concern and I think that we would look very carefully if they tried to do this exactly.
I actually had a similar question, not about the decks, but do you do you know if any fire escapes are required here off of those bedrooms?
No, they wouldn't.
They're not? Okay.
Anyone else?
My name is Jessica Sergi and I live at 462 Adams. So I'm the I'm the old convent to St. Agatha's, right on the corner of Adams and St. Agatha Road. So I just had a a couple of things I wanted to bring up. First, for the the use itself, and I know we're not talking about the use here, but I do want to say for the record that I think that there's been no hardship that's been found here so that it's a requirement or that it's appropriate for a used variance to be permitted. And in fact, the nature of the project where there are residential units included shows that residential units or a single-family home or other residential units can be on this property. So but I just wanted to say that. A couple of things that were said today, I just wanted to clarify. The driveway question, I I was at the meeting last night and I don't I think that they said it should be considered by the planning board, but that it's not their job to determine where exactly a driveway should be located on a site. So I don't know if it was a specific decision and maybe we should get clarity from them on.
We're going to get clarity because that's it would be a huge issue.
Yeah, so I it was and maybe I missed I didn't hear correctly, but it sounded like they wanted discussion here about what you guys thought. The and I was at the prior meeting here when the gentleman from the Historical Commission came and suggested possibly keeping the building perpendicular to the road. And one question I had was whether we could see plans doing that so that we could can folks could look at it and see if whether it worked regardless of where the driveway went. It looks like if the driveway is moved this way, there's even more room to put the building perpendicular to the road to satisfy that concern about the massing of the building when you're looking at it.
I think there's no question you can move the building. They they suggest that the building is in pretty tough shape.
Oh, I'm sorry. I mean, the the new building that they're proposing to. Yes.
Suggesting that we rotate the.
Rotate it.
Rotate it.
Problem with that is you bring in the rear yard setback issue.
Well, but it looks, I mean, and this is just from the drawing, it looks like it would have more space to the left.
And want to waste time. We're not going to do that.
Well, also, the the people who live in the back say that it just brings the building closer to them.
Can we just let?
I'm sorry.
This one, sweet.
Okay, but go.
Okay, so that was just a thought. And then the other question that I had was, the zoning board did say that they would they would leave may I can't remember exactly the wording, but they didn't approve the used variance, but said that they would approve it as long as these conditions were met and everybody was satisfied here. So one question I have is whether there's still an option to do less than two office spaces because, as we heard tonight, which no one knew last night about the prior variances at this site, including the zoning board members. So one question is whether it can be smaller and there can be an office and a residence or just some other variation, not two and two. Or, you know, a four-family residence, something like that. I I feel like there's been one proposal and that's the only proposal that everyone has seen. So that was another question I had. And I think those were my main those were my main comments.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think that.
I would be curious to know why haven't other things been, you know, one office, one apartment, you know, you had said that you decided this path or this path. So I'm just curious the thinking behind that.
Well, I suppose a four-family would be economically very viable, but the idea was that it was mixed use in the past and they were going to continue it. But I don't, you know, a four-family is is I think would be would be less satisfactory.
I I think that, I mean, and I don't know, you know, we haven't discussed different options, so it may be that it is. But one question is in the concerns that people have about the safety and the traffic is people who don't know, if someone lives there, they know how to get to where you live. And it's a limited number of cars typically, unless they have visitors going to and fro. But if it is a commercial area, then people who don't know where they're going will cause more chaos. So I think that that's what that's why we just were wondering whether other options could be or would be or explored.
So when you say less satisfactory, does that mean less financially viable or who's it less satisfactory to? I'm just trying to.
Well, I think that we do have two families in the in the town and two families are allowed under the zoning. We don't have four families.
Right, okay.
Under our zoning and I don't know, I I don't feel comfortable with opening it up for fours and sixes, whatever, but without zoning it. I mean, we have zoned we have zoned parcels for many more than four. I don't know. I I mean, it's interesting because you obviously could fit four families into this building with no problem.
Yeah, but you have a precedent office use here that's been here for decades and, you know, whether it's one or two office tenants in a, I think they're 1,000 square foot spaces. I mean, it's just they're just not that big. And I think you have to look at the the intensity of use as well. I mean, if you're talking about 2,000 square foot offices that are probably going to be opened from probably eight to six, worst case, versus four residential units, which would now probably start to have decks and probably start to have, you know, people using them on weekends. And I think it's a much more intense use to have four residential units there than than a couple of office buildings with small small units above them. That would be my opinion. And I think for me, the precedence of the mixed use really is what carries it, though, is the fact that it's been an office for so long.
But I do feel it's interesting to hear about what the prior variances were because it was because there was a substantial hardship for these folks in the 60s and 70s and then therefore continued. And there has been no use in that way for five or six years. So it seems like the slate is kind of wiped clean and now we're starting with, okay, what what should be here and what makes sense. And I'm not saying, you know, that four-family is the best, I just threw that out there, for other options, you know, strictly residential, two-family or, you know, something.
But they did mention the the 40B possibility.
Right.
Which would be, say, 16 units, four affordable. That would, you know, it'd be an apartment building. I mean, there are options, but they've mentioned a few of them, but and and, you know, if you can conceive of a use, you could you obviously, when you get a variance, you the zoning no longer applies, the variance overcomes the zoning, just like 40B overcomes the zoning. So if you can think of something that you'd like to have there, you and you get a variance for it, you're good to go. So it's a it's it's an interesting procedure. I think that they have offered. I think that they have offered, they've offered what they would like, what they would like. And it may not be exactly what you would like, but what, do you know what you would like?
Something within the zoning requirements.
You'd like two single-family houses.
Sure. And, you know, one thing that was stated last night was, well, you know, it would be crazy for someone to live there, which struck me because there are two different residences that are being built there, so we're expecting people to live there. So I don't know why it's assumed that a single-family home wouldn't be viable there.
Because these would be sort of designed for childless people, whereas your single-family house would be designed for people with children. Because that's what you do.
But there's still, I mean, it's still a two-bedroom apartment, so.
I understand.
Yeah, well, those were my comments.
Okay, well, these are the interesting comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I thought that was pretty interesting, and so that follow-up on the clarity from the Board of Appeal decision about the driveway is really important in my mind.
Yeah.
So thank you for that.
Thank you.
I guess with respect to the board's decision, Mary Fitzgerald will be preparing some noted, some minutes of the decision. My clear understanding from Jeff Mullen in particular was that if the public safety officials said that the driveway should go on the right-hand side, that was the condition under which he was going to approve of that.
Okay, well, we'll figure this out. Yes, ma'am?
Should probably request the tra, is it the Traffic Commission that waited? Maybe they can get something to us, too.
Yeah, I'd love to see a letter from the Traffic Commission, just explaining their rationale and why they don't listen, why they're not listening to the technical report.
Well, I mean, if the, if the Board of Appeal says it's the way it is, that'd be fine, but.
I don't agree, I want to hear it.
So, because it has impact on the neighborhood, I do think it's worth us getting all of the backup from what's been said.
I suppose that we could say we disagree with you.
Yes.
At least I can see the backup. And I would like them to consider the history of this, whether there was problems with that driveway in the current location.
And I also want to understand, too, because, you know, the Historic Commission came before us and they had explained, you know, the history of this area was that there was green space on either side of it. Where widening the building significantly, we're going to lose that, but the prior plan did have at least some green space and you could enhance it with some architectural features. And I also just want to apologize to the proponent because I feel like you've been through the Milton shuffle of, go to this board and it's going to be on this side and you go, and I know there's some, a lot of expense, Ned's time, and all these development plans, and I feel for you and I'm sorry that that's happened and continuing to happen and I hate to see that happen.
Thank you.
All right, welcome.
Thank you. Keetland Spalding, 15 Andrews Road. I just wanted to kind of piggyback on the traffic discussion and the driveway placement discussion, would just ask for some due diligence around, for the option where the driveway is right in front of the island there. It would really force people to come back and through our neighborhood, which regardless of how many cars that is in actuality, I would really, really encourage you to do a traffic study on our street on a Friday from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. and just have that data to help inform your decision. We have 23 children on those three streets, the eldest of which is 10. We have three elderly people, one of which has Alzheimer's who sometimes wanders through the neighborhood. There's just, there's a lot of concern with the residents of the neighborhood. It is more densely packed than it has been even in the past five years. So that's just, I just wanted to put it on the record that I would really like to have a strong traffic study in our neighborhood specifically so we can make an informed decision on how we're actually impacting the traffic. And that's it.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I respond? Can I respond to that particular piece of the comment? I know that the Traffic Commission is actually looking at Hollis, Babcock, and the, I agree with the comment that coming on a Friday afternoon, the cars do come out of the Wood Street Extension, they get in the left-hand, get in the, they run, they take the right-hand turn, they get in the left-hand lane, they shoot up Babcock, up to Hollis and out to Edge Hill, because they don't want to go the other way. I do know that the Town Engineering Department is looking at taking and making Hollis a one-way from Edge Hill to Adams, so that we could potentially stop some of that traffic. So I know the Traffic Commission will be looking at the issue and they'll be taking counts in that area.
So my question when the Traffic Commission does this, we don't have a, do we have a traffic engineer on the commission?
No, we have an engineer.
So, my concern, this is broader, this is beyond this project, but is how they make decisions, whether they look at the impact that it has on the neighboring streets, because there's lots of these one-ways put up and it's diverted lots of traffic on, concentrated traffic onto a smaller number of streets, which has a greater number, it has a great impact on the people on that street while it's relieved it from another street. So, anyway, just.
Well, but no, but related to this project, we heard earlier that if we're going to move the driveway, that this, that going around the Babcock Circle was your means for getting in, and now we're reversing the directions that that is no longer possible.
No, the other way.
Oh, going up to Edge Hill?
You would not be able to go, you would not be able to come out.
You wouldn't be able to take a right on Babcock?
Couldn't use Hollis, it'd be one-way going.
Yeah, onto Adams.
Onto Adams.
I get it, I understand that, so that means you now can't go around the circle.
Yes, you can, now you go Babcock.
Okay. The other thing I just wanted to quickly point out on these roads is as you look at traffic reports, the traffic report evaluates how many additional trips you're putting on the roadways, okay? So, just for the ZBA's sake, if they're watching on the record, the traffic report is saying you're putting, or am for the Safety Commission for that matter, you're putting one additional car on Adams Street for this use, okay? But you're probably putting 10 cars in that parking lot. And if the only way to get into it is to go around the circle, you're not putting one car on the circle, you're putting 10 cars on the circle. So, the traffic is saying there's one additional car on Adams, that's because nine of the 10 cars that are going to the office building are already driving on Adams today, that's how these traffic reports are calculated. But you're putting all 10 of those cars on that residential street to get back to that building, because I don't know how else they get there, unless they know locally to get off at Exit 11, come down, you know, squant them and go that way. Most people aren't going to know to do that, and so they're all going to be whipping around.
They might not be coming from that direction, though.
How do you get to this building otherwise? There's no way to get there without, even if you're coming from the south, you still have to go around the circle. Oh, if you're coming from.
Coming to take a right.
Fair enough, fair enough, you're coming up Burke Road, yeah, fair enough, okay.
Right.
Understood.
It doesn't put all of them on it, but I get your point.
Yeah.
It's 9:40, it's 8:40. We've got two, two more things to do. We've got 333 Brush Hill Road, which shouldn't take very long. And then we have a discussion of Avenue A. And they say they would like the input of the planning board on the design of this project. And I have a number of ideas, but I haven't written them down yet. And my feeling is that it might be worthwhile if we did, having been asked and having seen what we've got. I mean, we didn't get a plan today, they said we'll do the plan when we know what you want. It does seem to me that we should give that some thought and at our next meeting, say this is what we want. What do you think?
And in light of that, can I ask a question? Because if we're still considering the notion of where the driveway wants to go, we're kind of in a holy pattern, we can't.
Well, I think we need clarity. I think we need clarity on that statement about the ZB.
I mean, we can, we've got drafts of plans, we can consider what, you know, we can consider issues about.
All right, well.
Particularly how the building's going to look.
The ZBA meetings are probably on Milton Access TV.
Not last night, they wasn't televised.
Okay.
So we can't watch.
In any event, we will get, I will ask Chairman.
Okay.
What the deal is, that'd be great. Mary's got her notes, you can.
Yeah, I mean, we should get the minutes and I want to see the minutes of the Traffic Commission, too.
But in the meantime, on the building, you had an elevation. Do you think it's possible you could update the rendered view of it to show the porch, extended porch?
I think we can start to do that, I mean.
Realizing it could shift.
Yeah, the, you know, so some fundamental questions. Do you want to see a commercial look to the windows on the first floor? So rather than.
Backup, Bill.
So rather than individual windows that look residential, do you want that to have?
Do we want it to look like a commercial building on the first floor? I think I could answer that. No.
Maybe if you like, generally the way those windows look, that's fine, we can leave them and show the wider porch opening. If there are other things that go more to colors or materials that you'd like us to consider, I mean, right now that's white, it's a big white wall. Do you want us to consider color options, how you might break that up from a massing perspective?
Can you pull up the existing photo, the building of the, the photo of the existing building?
No, it's spectacular.
Is that a photo or is that a live Google Earth?
That's Google Earth.
Yeah, exactly.
And, there we go. Well, I mean, the consistency about the architecture in terms of having, you know, there's a consistency to that and there's a consistency to this, so to convert the lower to be something that's inconsistent with what's above would kind of be odd perhaps, but it's done a lot, but you would have this be more, read much more of a sign band, it would really be, look more of a retail look, I think, than an office look. So I think we want to, we don't want to confuse it that way. So, I do think that going through the elevations, the proportions of the windows are always an interesting and important thing, because oftentimes in historic buildings, the proportion is a little more vertical than, than you get, like, so if I'm looking at this in elevation rather than a rendering, these are a little squat, if you will. So I think, you know, having the architect look at those proportions, yeah, I think that would be helpful.
The architect is going to look at this entire building.
Yeah, but we're trying to give guidance, right? So.
I'm hoping to actually move on to the next, the next hearing.
We'll do guidance for next time, okay.
All right.
And that since the driveway location seems to be critical to getting a site plan, I think that that's exactly what we're going to do.
So would you anticipate on the night that you would request a report or a presentation?
I will talk to, I will talk to Chairman Leonard and say that there is a question and we need a definitive answer because you guys need the answer if we're to get the stuff that we need to review this project on site plan approval.
So Alex, are you going to have that conversation and communicate it with Bill or them or something?
I am going to initiate it on the telephone.
Before our next meeting, so when they.
Before the next meeting.
So they will have some clarity so they can deliver us something?
And I, once I get the, once I get the answer, I will communicate with Bill and Bill will not keep it a secret.
I'm going to, can I make one parting comment, Alex, please? All right, on this, the, if you look at Jubenville here and you look at the building that was here before, if you looked at not having this extend all the way across, because they were getting this very horizontal look here, if you stop these here, you get this read on these, then I think you're going to pick up on the historic character even, and combine that with the porch in front, and then I think you.
And I mentioned the wooden shutters, the edge.
Are you talking about, are you talking about a shed donor roof on that?
I'm just saying, don't take this trim all the way across, that's all. So that you get the read of the gable end better, right? And then it takes away the fact that you've got the strong horizontal here when you really want to pick up the proportion of the historic there. And then the porch helps it with, the same way. So, I mean, even if you did trim, but not this extensive, you know, exactly, yeah. And you look at the proportion of that and then I think.
Okay.
My architect hat is off.
All right. So we're going to do this on November 9th, what's the, what's the time?
We have a hearing for 1065 Brush Hill Road at 7:15. We also have to address the town farm amendment, which doesn't have a time assigned.
All right, well, we're going to, we're going to put the town farm after this.
Okay, so this will be at 7:30?
Not 7:30, I think this will be at 8:00. 8:00?
That's, that's fine.
What's before it?
1065 inches early.
1065.
Are we confident 1065 is going to be ready?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, we're, so.
I know.
So 1065.
I'd rather put it at 7:30 and get to it.
Have all the people wait?
Rather than having us here doing everything.
If we wait, we can always discuss zoning.
Oh gee, great.
Which we love to do.
So the only thing I can say about 1065 is I had a very productive meeting with the Fire Chief the other day, and as a result of that, Council and I may have some ability to work to an outcome. And so, I don't think we'll have, we won't have time, we won't spend 45 minutes.
All right, 7:45.
Half hour is probably good.
Compromise.
If the zoning board is listening, can I just make one final note?
Of course.
I'm sorry, it's just that I had, you know, supported the mixed use because my understanding was the neighbors were on board and now that I'm seeing these letters and documents, that was, that's just, you know, that's how we came to it. I don't, I don't know what's happened since that meeting, but I, but it seems that the ship has left and the zoning board has made a decision for another reason.
We're going to find out what they've done.
Okay.
Definitively.
So.
And Bill will notify when we do. All right, so, continued until November 9th at 7:45. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right, 333 Brush Hill Road. We have secured a tax of $15,000. And I am, as we speak, going to sign a contract that you've all seen on behalf of the planning board, so that we can get the engineer to work surveying the property and reviewing the drainage. Once we have a survey, we are going to give it to the landscape architect, who is going to do a landscape plan. And then we're going to give it to the developer. The developer, early next spring, is going to, is going to execute the landscape plans. So.
Alex.
This is a public hearing, so we're going to see what people have to say.
All right, I just wanted to make note, I think mostly for the public and the abutters, that we've discussed that that landscape plan will consider the condition at the property lines of the abutters, right?
I think that, I'm glad you brought that up, because what we want to do for next time, we want to discuss the parameters of what the landscape architect is supposed to do. I mean, we have to describe what sort of a landscape plan it is that we want, and I think that the point you make is, is something that we. think that the point you make is something that we should consider also. So next time, think landscape plans. What do we want once we have our survey, which is what he's going to work with? Then we're going to get the landscape plan. So it looks like those aspects of the situation will be handled. Now, Bill, there's supposed to be an original copy of his signature that I can send. You're going to have to find the original, because that's... This is not... This is fine to send to him, but we need a copy with the original signature signed by me in order to have a valid contract here. Okay?
Yes.
Here is... That's for the landscape architect.
No, this is for the engineer.
That's for the engineer.
Are you throwing away the original landscape plan?
We are having a survey done of the existing conditions, and we're not throwing anything The original one, uh... The original landscaping plan is dated November 16, 2016, as I recall it. We're certainly going to provide that to the landscape architect, because it's a non-thoughtful piece of work for consideration. Now, who wants to be heard on 333 Brush Hill Road? Come on up and be heard.
Hi, my name is Julie from Jameson, Barack, and I live at 333... No, 366, confusing. It feels like I live at 333. 366 Truman Parkway. So I just wanted to ask a question. I heard what you're saying, and it sounds wonderful, that a plan is in place and some money is going to get spent to follow up on some of the things that the planning board have been discussing. My question is, with the landscape architect, will that... Does that include an arborist? And I heard your comment that the abutters' trees and... I'm assuming that the trees and abutters' properties, that would also get looked at at some point. But does it include an arborist with the landscape architect, or is that separate?
It's... The arborist is not included.
It's not included?
No.
Okay. So I did send a bunch of pictures, I hope you guys saw them, of the trees at 366 Truman Parkway, to the planning board.
Was this recently?
Yeah, yesterday. I did... The only email I could find was yours, Mr. Furze. So I sent them to you.
I don't... I'll have to send them to Bill.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. And those I could find in my box. So I sent about 15 pictures of trees that are failing or dead. So I wanted you to have a firsthand look at that. And at some point, I had mentioned that I had sent an email in 2015 to Mr. Clark to ask about notices being sent to the abutters. So I found that email. It's dated November 2015. One of you had asked me about the email, so I did forward that to the planning board as well. And in the email, I asked, "What is the Town of Milton's legal process if a direct abutter never received a notice of development?" And I said, "Let it be known that the above notice was never received by myself, and you have no evidence that it was. Also, I'm in complete opposition to the development until and when I have all the facts that an impact study on this, on how this development affects 366 Truman Parkway. I also pass responsibility for any damages to my property onto the Town of Milton, should this project continue and have negative impacts on my property." But that was in 2015, and this was sent to Julia Getman. She responded to me that she was sorry, but she couldn't send every abutter for every project a certified letter at $6 each. And if the letter is returned to us, we are obliged to find the correct address and resend it. And she apologized for the confusion. So I'm suggesting in future that if a special permit is granted, as this was, that maybe the $6 is worth it for the abutters, because, as I've said before, none of us on the Truman Parkway side that I have spoken with ever received notice of this development.
When they... They were breaking through with the access onto your side of the development, you didn't know about that?
Well, that's when 2015, let's see, that's when I contacted the... I started going to see Mr. Clark and sent this email, when I noticed that things were happening over there. So...
What was the date of the permit?
I have... Let's see. She sent a copy of the public hearing to me at that point. May 7, 2015. So, at any rate, my concerns remain. I've stated them to you before, and I'm happy that things are happening, but I am concerned about over the winter. We haven't had a lot of rain, to be quite honest. We've been in a drought, except for very recently. And the abutter... The developer did put a lot... Lots of dirt and gravel to try and stop the water from coming down, and it has prevented huge amounts of the rivers that we were seeing before, but it is a temporary measure, and it is only surrounded by a plastic sort of sheeting. So there is no retaining wall or anything that's permanent there, but certainly it proves the fact that they were saying for 100 years, the water was running down that hill. So the temporary measure shows that that certainly is not true, that the water had been coming from there. So I want, you know, to hold your feet to the fire on this one, and to ensure that, you know, we have a winter that we... All the abutters can bear, and that this drainage system that, you know, that you're sort of paying for to follow up on, that is, as soon as possible, is connected and we get to know. I mean, pay the $6 and let us know, or, you know, find a way to let us know. I found out about... I know I should check the calendar, but a neighbor told me about the meeting tonight.
But this, we don't... Didn't send out any notices about this meeting.
Yeah.
I don't have an email from you.
Strange.
So I just checked, and I had checked them this morning. It must have bounced back, maybe it was too large.
It must have bounced back. But you're very helpful, by the way, with that.
So Lauren will give you her email. Lauren will give you her email, so that she can distribute it to all of us, because I don't have it. I just checked.
I'll get the pictures to them, so they can see.
Can you also send Julie the link for that email on the agenda?
Yes, you were here earlier. We did work with our IT department and begin an enrollment, so you can sign up for email alerts every time an agenda is posted.
Okay.
So that's something that we just enrolled this week.
I pulled it up. It's posted, so I was able to see the agenda.
Yes. So in the country, right, you can get them on my occasion, anytime anything is posted. And just to speak to the certified mail, we have been doing certified mail moving forward. That is something we discussed.
That's great.
I don't believe you were at the last meeting, but that has been something we've been doing, yes.
That's very good. And lastly, I sent you an estimate. My driveway is going to cost over $26,000 to repair. And so, to let you know, you know, whatever you can pursue with this developer, because it's certainly not fair that we should have to spend all that money.
Was that also in the email to me?
I also have a copy of it.
Sonia, it's in that pack. Okay.
Oh, it's in our pack. It was like this.
I saw that, okay.
I just want to say thank you for all your hard work. We appreciate it.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Thank you.
Well, thanks for coming in again, and see you when in November.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? In a situation like this, does the developer have insurance? Like, would...
Yeah, they should have insurance.
Wouldn't... I mean, this is damage that came from... I would say wouldn't...
Well, this is, like all liability claims, a... Matter that has no easy solution.
And we might not be a party to it.
What?
And we may not be a party to it.
And we may not be the implementing agency, but we'll, you know, we'll do what we can. All right. Only an hour late. We're going to continue this. Until when, Bill?
Eight o'clock on the night.
Is it eight o'clock?
That would be the next time, I believe.
It's 8:15. 8:15.
We have 7:45 for 475 Adams.
We've got 7:15. We've got 7:45.
And we also have to discuss... We do have an A&R application to discuss, and we also have the whole thing project.
We'll do that early. We'll do this at 8:15. This is a continued hearing, so move to continue the hearing until November 9th at 8:15?
Yes.
Okay. I heard that motion, and I see a second of all, and you... All right, all in favor, high. So continue. Now, Avenue A. Where's Mrs. McCaffrey?
Where would you like us to set up a display?
Wherever you think it's most...
Alex, is there setting up? Is this a... So they're looking to get our feedback on proposed private way improvements for an A&R?
This is an informal discussion on... An informal discussion, and we'll find out.
Okay, you don't know all these details.
I think it's basically what sort of a construction does Avenue A need to become a street?
Thank you.
As part of an A&R application?
I didn't get one of these.
It's largely going to be more like...
Oh, thanks.
Ah, I can read it.
All right.
So I'm Marion McCaffrey. I represent the Murphy family and Peter Hicks, who are before you tonight with their engineer, Jim Burke of DeSalle Burke. We've been here twice before to discuss this issue with you, and just to... And I'll lend some background, and again, to explain that there are two landowners here. They both own property on Avenue A, which is a dead-end private way off Brush Hill Road. So both the Murphys and the Hicks have Brush Hill Road addresses, but their homes are on Avenue A. Peter Hicks is actually on both Avenue A and on an extension that goes off one side of Avenue A. Peter Hicks has land that he is interested in developing into two additional lots. The Murphys have a large lot. They would like to subdivide it so that their son can build a house on the other lot. So we came to you first with the Murphy's request, because in that case, because the Murphy's land is at the end of Avenue A, and only has about 30 feet of frontage, so in order to subdivide, they do have an A&R approval for their lot as it presently exists, with that 30 feet of frontage at the end of the way. But in order to subdivide, they have to create frontage. So we believe that the Murphys will have to do a subdivision application. We're hoping that certain aspects of it can provide relief in the form of waivers, because of the nature of the application, but that's for the future. We're not here tonight to ask you to approve anything, but we do expect that possibly the Murphys will be coming in to ask for your subdivision approval. Peter Hicks, on the other hand, has two lots with full frontage on Avenue A, or proposed lots or possible lots. They've been delineated by DeSalle Burke on a plan, and an architect has looked at one of the lots in particular, which has difficulties of siding for a house, to see whether it would be possible to place a house on that, one of those lots. If Avenue A were... Could provide adequate width, grade, and so forth to be a road, under the definition of road in our zoning bylaws, then Peter Hicks's two potential lots could be... They could be Form A lots. But the road is not in that... At least from discussions with the planning board, we've concluded the road is not in that condition at this time. So both applicant... And then, when we came in to talk about the Murphy's lot, which was the first time I met with you this summer, Peter Hicks's land came up, because it's sitting there, and it's large, and he has concepts of what he might want to do with some of his land. So it was a request of the planning board that we come back and discuss both sites. They're separate landowners, but in order to decide what to do, what might be possible, the planning board needs to have an idea of what both landowners intend to try to do. So that's why I'm here with both applicants, and that's why they've collaborated and hired an engineer. And what we've done tonight, after some discussion at the last meeting, is to prevent... Provide a conceptual plan, which is going to be explained by Jim Burke, for how you might improve Avenue A at the far end, in front of these possible new lots, in order to provide adequate access and, you know, a satisfactory road surface and road width for adequate access. So with your permission, I would like to ask Jim Burke to present an explanation of the roadway improvement plan that he has here, keeping in mind, you see the big letters, it's a conceptual plan. We're not asking you to, you know, we don't have something for you to vote on, and a roadway plan in the case of a subdivision application would be part of the subdivision application. But the work probably would have to be done ahead of time on the roadway, before there could be any A&R application for the other lot. So we're not sure what, you know, what the approach will be in either case. If possible, we'd like you to focus on the roadway itself. So is it okay if Jim Burke presents?
Of course.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Jim Burke with DeSalle Burke and Associates. Good to see everybody again. It's been a while. We had a lot of in-house information that Mr. Hicks has requested us to perform in the past, and so we were working with him to subdivide his parcel and look at different aspects of it in the past. What we'd have here is, you know, Avenue A is about 1,700 feet from Brush Hill Road, and it provides access to about seven lots, and varies in width, both in, you know, planned way, as far as a right-of-way width, as well as pavement. So it starts out at 40 feet and reduces down to 30 as it passes Peter Hicks's driveway. And pavement also reduces down. It's wide as 22 feet at Brush Hill Road and gets down to about 10 feet as it approaches Mr. Murphy's lot. And what they asked me to take a look at, it was, you know, could you actually improve it, widen it without too much impacts? And what I found is that's quite possible. The shoulders on both sides of the access drive, as it reduces down to 10 feet, is fairly considerable. I mean, it's... The wetlands themselves are pretty much on the outskirts of the right-of-way, so that's 30 feet. We're looking to get it 14 feet with two... With one-foot shoulders on either side. So I think the physicality of, you know, widening that access road, private way, is definitely possible without any wetland alteration whatsoever. We did have to see the Conservation Commission, obviously, for work in the buffer, and they have their 25-foot no-disturb buffer, but I think we can probably work with them in that as well. We suggest, well, I think a super-elevated road, since the pavement width is only 14 feet. You'd control the drainage, it's super-elevated into the slope, so you could create a driveway without curbs, so you have the slope coming down, and you bank the road kind of 2% into that way, and so you create almost like a natural gutter. And then you'd throw, you know, a couple of catch basins and leaching pits and the like. The lots themselves will handle their own runoff, so I think, all in all, we can certainly engineer and construct a new driveway within that private way for multiple lots.
A little bit more background. I'm sure you have questions and may want more detail, but I want to provide, I guess, refresh your memory. The planning board has approved an A&R plan for Scheller property, which is on the far side of Avenue A and is also on Hammond Way Drive. The Schellers originally came in with... The Schellers originally came in with a proposal for a lot on Avenue A as part of their subdivision, but they removed that from their proposal. They have also subsequently allowed DCR, they were paid for it, but they've allowed them to take by eminent domain Lot B in their, in their A and R development plan. So they, they have two lots at the end of Hammond Way Drive that will remain for development, but you may not be fully aware that the Schellers have agreed to give additional land on Lot A to DCR by the end of two thousand and eighteen, and they'll just be giving that to DCR. So the lots are not, aren't all shown here, but generally, the land along here is owned by the Schellers before you get to the Murphy's, and DCR is going to be getting another substantial piece here and a piece here. So DCR will not only own a lot over here, they're going to own a piece of Scheller land here, a piece of Scheller land here, and although it hasn't been defined yet, there will be two conservation easements granted to DCR in the wetland areas and on the remaining lots that are going to be developed. So when we came back in here in our last meeting, we had with us Jim Camo from DCR. So DCR certainly takes a great interest in this area, and DCR has been consulted and is continuing to be consulted about these development plans. And in particular, the Murphy's, I don't think there's a definite plan in place, but the Murphy's are discussing giving or granting by conservation easement a piece of their property that they would subdivide to DCR as well. So I know when DCR was in here, they said, you know, if they had their first choice, it would be that there didn't have to be improvement at Avenue A at all, but they also said that, I don't know if they said it before you or when they were conferring with us in the other room, but Jim Camo certainly recognizes that the planning board has to decide what's a safe and accessible roadway. And so this is a plan, we've attempted to put together a plan that does improve the roadway, but does it in as minimal a way as possible, still paying attention to drainage and wetlands, providing fourteen feet of pavement, which is considerably better than what's there now. It would only be, it would be to provide access to two lots at the end and two lots on the side. There's an existing A and R lot that was approved by the planning board two years ago, belongs to Andrew, Andrew Hack, and is in the process of being developed. He was not required to improve the roadway in front of his property. It's right in the middle of the front of his property where the roadway goes from thirty feet to twenty feet in width. Is that approximately what it is?
It goes from forty to thirty.
I'm sorry, forty to thirty, sorry.
The right-of-way?
The right-of-way. The right-of-way does. So there is a requirement, however, there's a deed restriction or an agreement entered into by the previous owner who sold the lot, that the new owner would contribute five thousand dollars to the cost of improving the roadway. So that's supposed to go into a fund at the time. They actually try to have to access their lot. It's not a huge amount of money, but they would be able to make some contribution to the cost of these improvements or to maintenance. So I just wanted to give you a little bit more background, and go ahead, or questions?
Seventeen hundred square, I mean, we're going to have to see the whole thing and make sure that we've counted all the potential lots right. And I anticipate that whatever improvements are required, it will apply to the whole seventeen hundred square, seventeen hundred feet, not just a portion of it, depending on, you know, the condition, but most probably, it would impact the entire roadway. So certainly, finding out what the people who live on Avenue A have to think of this is important to us. So this is a discussion, but if anyone who has a view on whether or not Avenue A should become a street to its very end should communicate with us.
Could I just ask Marion a quick question? Were any of the neighbors notified of this plan? Has, has Peter Hicks spoken with the Millingtons or the Orions or the Pipers?
I don't know if the neighbors in the front have yet. I, I don't know what kinds of discussions have taken place recently. They obviously will be taking place.
So this is the first?
It's pretty hard to know until we have at least some idea of what the planning board might be looking for, how to proceed, or even whether.
We, of course, want to know what the people who live want before we sort of say, this is what we want to impose on you.
Okay. Well, we, of course, what we've been dealing with has been, are all the neighbors who are, who own the property, who are all around the end, and the Andrew Hack, who is a newer owner. Right now, we have the Schellers who support, they don't need this, but they support the improvements. They did make a proposal originally to create a lot on Avenue A. This issue of the quality of the road came up. They would have had to address it had they persisted.
Do they still have that potential, though? They have the potential of creating a lot, don't they?
No, they won't, because they're giving the land to DCR.
So you were, you were saying a piece of it and a piece of it, but they're effectively giving away all their frontage on Avenue A?
Yes, they're, they're giving away a lot of that, that piece. They have a, they have electric, their electrical lines come in from Avenue A into their lot. They're certainly not giving up every inch of their frontage on Avenue A. Well, I have, I have something that I can show you. I brought this tonight.
They've got a ton of wetlands, and...
They, they do not plan, why don't you pass these around? Is that the least here? To keep these in the record. However, the, the plan has not been drawn yet, showing these pieces that are going to be conveyed to DCR. This is conceptual. This is what more or less may be intended. They've retained a little bit of land here and there in case there's a need by a neighbor for a corner or a piece.
So these are all for us. So Marion, what you're saying is the stuff with the heavy outline is the stuff that's being conveyed, the land to be conveyed?
Yeah, actually, it does look like it's all of the frontage on Avenue A, except for a little corner.
That line.
And that was only if the Murphy's needed it.
I see.
For one of the configurations they had considered for subdivision. Does everybody have it?
Nope.
They do support the application. They support the idea of improving the end of the road. They're not here tonight. We didn't view it as a public hearing. I didn't even know that they would have an opportunity to...
No, it's just a discussion. We don't...
Yeah. You know, Mr. Hicks owns a large part of the property on the other side of Avenue A. The Murphy's own the property at the end. There are neighbors earlier on on Avenue A and the Hacks. There's Barbara Piper. We will, they will certainly be talking with all of them. We just produced this plan a few days ago. This is the sort of thing that you can use to go and start talking to neighbors, but you do need to have some idea what you're talking about when you make these, get into So that's the answer to your question. No, we have not, but I, I fully expect that there would be a lot of discussion about these proposals. I guess, you know, we talked about pavement width or no increase in pavement width at the last meeting, so one reason we wanted to draw the plan was to get more feedback on that, on, we wanted to see whether it was possible to do something like this, how the wetlands would impact the location, the roadway improvements required. We wanted to see whether you could have a shoulder without going into the adjacent property, and there is enough room in the right-of-way to do a fourteen-foot pavement width and adequate shoulder. There would be two driveways. You can see, the reason we've, we've done the plan this way is to give you an idea of where houses could be located, where driveways would be located, and those also provide additional space if there's turnaround required and that sort of thing. We, I, I understand that you're saying that we have to provide, we have to show the whole roadway. We need to show you what the existing, this is what, part of what you do in this plan would be, to show the existing condition, how wide the pavement is, and to describe the existing condition, because it's very different at the beginning of Avenue A from, from the end. The end was basically used as a driveway to get to the Langenens lot and the people who owned this property for many years. It's no longer just a driveway, because now you have one A and R lot that's been created. You have Peter Hicks proposing two other lots, and the Murphy's would like, as I said, would very much like to subdivide their lot. They have enough acreage to do so, so that their son or daughter, I'm not sure which it is, could build a house in the second lot. If you can give us more information at this point about what you might be looking for, we'd be happy to hear it, but we certainly can assure you that we'd be talking to everybody who lived on Avenue A and nearby, as you would always have to do in this type of proposal.
Usually, when we approve a street that's more than six hundred feet long, five hundred feet long, five or six hundred feet long, we require an emergency access at some point where it becomes longer. I, I mean, that's been fairly traditional. There was a driveway, driveway subdivision, that I think is about the same length. How long is Mike's?
Stormbridge. I think it's eighteen hundred?
Eighteen hundred, but that's a driveway, not a street.
But could a driveway be for five or six houses? Could that be considered a shared driveway?
You can't have frontage on a driveway.
Yeah, it doesn't meet the zoning bylaw definition of frontage, and, you know, the...
Frontage has to be on a street.
Okay.
And a street has to be adequate.
Yeah, a street can be a pre-existing, it can be a pre-existing private way, has to have been in existence before nineteen thirty-eight, and the planning board has to decide that the way provides adequate access. And there's three components to adequate access, the nature of the construction, the grade, and the width, the pavement width. And that's all in our, it's in the bylaws, similar to subdivision control law requirements for existing ways. So, you know, this is an existing way. It was created in, at least in nineteen twelve, on, laid out on a plan. Houses have been built on it. The original creation of Avenue A contemplated that there would be additional lots created on the way. They even have, you know, maintenance agreements, recorded maintenance agreements that define how assessments are to be made for the additional lots. So certainly, subdivision of the land in the original nineteen twelve plan was something that everybody expected to happen, and it has happened. In the case of this end of Avenue A, this is pretty much the end of any subdivision that can happen, because there's only so much property, only so much acreage. In the case of the Murphy's, they would like to subdivide. They would be interested in giving or providing conservation easements to DCR. DCR is interested in that, which means that they're not only subdividing, but they're also restricting the use of some of their land, so that it would not be, nothing would be changed, I assume, although I don't think it's been fully worked out how that would, what would happen there. In the case of the other two lots, there would be two houses built. You can see on this plan where they're, where the houses would be located. The question is, what is adequate access from the way? And it's, it's a street that doesn't serve a lot of houses. It's not a through street. It wouldn't be a cut-through, but it would need to be adequate access for the houses that would be created. That's, that's what the planning board would have to decide ultimately, as far as what type of road was necessary. Whether, I mean, I, I think you have to do a subdivision plan for the Murphy lot, ironically, because it's a small proposal, and it's only to subdivide, and his intention is to use the lot for his own family, similar to the way a lot of the land around here was used. But it requires a subdivision because of the frontage.
But until Peter Hicks is, I mean, he needs a subdivision also, and he's to get lots.
Yes, he does, unless you improve the road and then you decide...
Well, no, I mean, if we turn the road into a street, then he can, he can get a Form A approval.
Right, and that's the point of why we're talking about this at one, altogether.
Right.
Because when you make the decision to improve the way, which is what the Murphy's are asking for, you are, it's creating, you know, we are going to be improving the road. It's, it's a legitimate, in my view, proposal, but you want to consider what, how far you really want to go with this.
Right, the impacts, yeah.
Well, it seems to me having the turnaround is an improvement for the safety for the existing homes in any case. So because of that length and not having a way for an emergency vehicle to turn around unless they rely upon a driveway, I guess.
Yeah, that's the reason for the design, although you also need it for the frontage.
But it's currently just a driveway.
Understood, but I'm suggesting that the length, the concern about the length is improved upon by having the turnaround at the end, no?
Well, I mean, certainly, you can, not having a turnaround at the end would be unfortunate.
Yeah. So the other question, then, is in terms of emergency. Are there fire hydrants along this, so in terms of fire?
There will have to be a water line. There is not, well, actually, I can't speak to that.
There's a fire hydrant on Hammond Way.
There's a fire hydrant on Hammond Way, which currently is the way you would access water for the, what I call the Langenens lots, Murphy's property at the end. They will have to bring a water line in to these, to the, at least to the two Hicks lots, and in doing that, they would have to put in fire hydrant. I mean, this is, this is going to have to have municipal water service, and it's going to have to have fire hydrants.
That was just a question, again, in terms of the public safety aspect of the length of the road, right? And where, where the fire department would tie into something.
Right. If you have a rural, in some rural locations where you have a street or a road and you don't have public water and people rely on wells, you simply don't have fire hydrants. I mean, this is actually possible, but that's not what we're proposing here. But that is, what you have right now, existing condition, is that the lot at the end uses a, has to use a fire hydrant.
Well, my, my point about that is to say that I think it would be a public safety improvement to have the fire hydrant, because I think everyone will recall that there were two fatalities not too long ago at a, a fire in Milton. And so if we contemplate, you know, what benefits there are doing this, there's, in my mind, there's benefits to public safety for, for the fire hydrants and for the turnaround. And there's also benefit broader than that to having increased protected lands with, you know, for DCR. So, you know, those are things I think that should weigh into, you know, our decision.
So I, I know from walking this road, take my dog this way. You cross over two rivers. In, in the spring, especially the, the river comes right over the roadway. So I was actually surprised to hear. So down below that is where we found the salamanders. So I'm happy to hear that you're working with DCR, but, so you're talking about building up the pavement? That's how you would, because currently, the river goes right over the road, in the spring especially.
Which, which one? You're talking about the?
I think Lot Three.
The one more to the, the west?
Were the two wetlands across the road?
Yeah, well, yeah, you can, actually, both there.
That's, you know, because...
Both of those bodies.
Because we actually had wetland scientists go out there and delineate the wetlands, and we field-located them, and I took a look at the culvert on Peter Hicks's property. It's got some good depth to it. It can handle a lot of flow, and I'm confident it actually does. The soils up there are kind of tight and generates a lot of runoff. But, yeah, I walked the whole thing. I didn't see any sort of, huh?
Recently, you walked through?
Yes.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's really in the spring that you see it coming over the road itself. So, so you're thinking of building it up? So this, it's a catch twenty-two. You build it up too high, I'm worried about the salamanders getting down to the habitat, the vernal pool where they mate every year. And if you don't build it up high enough, then it's going to be a disaster.
Well, we're not planning on changing the grades at all. Honestly, I see the pavement just being kind of torn up, new gravel blocks, sixteen feet wide, placed and compacted. If we have to make some improvements to culverts at this point, now's the time to do it. But... But as far as the hydraulic connections, you know, we could certainly, if it's going over the road, we should probably fix that.
Jim, what does, when you say proposed head wall, what, can you describe what the head wall is?
Right now, there are no head walls, it's just basically a pipe. A head wall will provide long-term road care, if you will. You know, without a head wall, you runoff will sometimes splash outside the culvert and erode the bank. Putting a head wall in is a good engineering design. You don't necessarily need them, you could put a flared end with earth, there's a lot of different ways to do it. But right now, it's a conceptual head wall, so.
And that's composed of what material?
Concrete.
And you have an idea how big it is?
It'd be 12 inches wide, maybe eight feet long.
Can you show us where you, you know, what you really, because I don't even, I don't actually even know what you mean by a head wall. Does it go along the road?
Yeah, it runs parallel to the pavement. So it's a, the water will come down off the hill, and you'll have wing walls, and it'll channelize the water into the culvert, as opposed to, if you don't have it, it kind of just, the water goes up against the, the earth berm, against the road embankment, and kind of makes its way through to the culvert. A head wall channelizes a little bit better, the hydraulics are better.
It's a case, this is a good case of why, I mean, it's good to talk about a concept plan, and I, these are great comments. You have to have the specifics. So for example, your concern about whether wildlife that crosses the road now will still be able to do it. You have to see the specific plan to know whether there's a problem, and if there's a problem, it has to be addressed. So you have to make sure you're not blocking that, or whatever. If water's currently running over the road, then it should be directed into culverts under, if it's going to wash the road away, and it probably has. But it needs, I mean, you have to see the specifics of the plan to see where a culvert would be located, and whether there might be some concern. I don't, I think it's useful to know exactly where, you have the drawing.
The culverts would go where the greens areas are, but, yeah, that's one area, and that's the other area. So you'd have two culverts in those locations, and we could size them.
Could you write there?
Typically, typically you size culverts, in the old Mass Highway book, they size them for 50-year storms. Conservation Commission, knowing those guys, they'll want.
Yeah, but there's only one head wall proposed, right?
Yeah, like I say, it's a concept plan, so.
I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah.
The one or the two?
I would say there'd probably be two.
One.
Yeah, you'd want two.
It's a one definitive, but this one down here might be big enough?
The one on Peter Hicks's land is big, it's got significant depth to it. And the, the one over in Mr. Murphy's lot, yeah, it's not as, not as defined.
Thank you.
Sure.
We didn't want to, I mean, I think it's premature to say that we're, you know, we're going to go talk to the fire chief about whether this is adequate, but obviously, that's also a consideration. Certainly, I've talked to the fire chief about Avenue A in the past, because we had the earlier proposal. But he would have comments and recommendations about design if we're going to make improvements to the roadway, and we'd certainly seek input from the fire chief.
Why don't we see if there's anyone here who wants to comment on your conceptual plan? Does anyone want to comment on this? Come and join us.
Familiar face here, Nick Menke, from 60 Hemingway Drive. I am in a butter, about 900 feet on the Murphy's property. I also am a true butter, in the sense of I share water, and the fire hydrant is in my front yard, and when the fire people come out, and they come out from Canton, and they're asking me, where is 85 Hemingway Drive? And I have to point them through the woods, and they have to unroll their hoses, and they probably come pretty much at the limit of where it is. But what I wanted to really talk about is really the quality of the road there. Dr. Langivan lived in that property for around 30 years, and he would use my property for egress and entry when Avenue A was blocked, for whatever reason, whether it was tree down, or whether it was flooding, because the culvert gets locked up, and so you really can't go down there, it's a rather narrow road. So, we actually went to the extent of drafting a formal easement that expired when he sold the house. But I wanted to bring that to your attention, because I think it shows what 30 years of experience led to. And that led the grantor, so 60 Hemingway Drive, having vehicular access to Hemingway Drive, above the grantor's property. The grantees shall have use and access to that small portion of land, as described in the exhibit, to permit emergency vehicle access over the land owned by the grantors, and allow for such vehicles to access to the road identified as Hemingway Drive. The easement shall be used by the grantees solely when vehicular access to the grantees' residence at 1439 Brushhill Road, Milton, through use of Avenue A is otherwise blocked, obstructed, or impassable. So this was something that, you know, when you get to that level, registry, Norfolk Registry of Deeds, and somebody who lived there for 30 years, it's a significant concern. Now, I've been in front of your, this group here, as representative, co-president of Hemingway Drive Association, one of the founders of the Friends of Hemingway Woods, 501 C3. And really, through this experience over the last five years with Milton Muse, that's kind of given my retirement a focus, if you will, on conservation. So, a couple of years ago, the group where I live signed up again, without really any objections, further extension, so it goes till 2036. So it's already, was already 50 years old, and another 20 years, so that the minimum lot size for our whole 130 acres is six acres. And it has a number of other restrictions. We also have a scenic way that we had passed by the town meeting of Canton. And I don't want to bore you with all the facts here in terms of the archaeological resources. It turns out that there's a paleo find, which is in this area, and there's certainly wildlife that's endangered, whether it's alamanders or turtles. And there's also plant life, we've actually had from National Heritage, they came out, they couldn't believe that there were these wild orchids growing. So it is a very special area. I wasn't at your last meeting, but I understand Jim Camo had some, some good things to say about the area. And that echoes what was said 60 years before by the Secretary of State of the state of Massachusetts, in designating the first area of critical environmental concern, that is this area. So, the neighbors have gone ahead with substantial commitments, you just heard that the Shellers have made a commitment. Another neighbor with 26 acres has decided to fully put his land with one house in conservation, and given land to, to the, to DCR. So there is really here, when you live in the area, a concern about that we really are in the middle of the Blue Hills. And so any, any development sadly does start to take away from it. And it's just really that this area is kind of special. And I only represent, I'm a small landowner relative to a lot of the others, but they have all, not only voiced, but they have actually put their money where their mouth is. So I'll be interested to see what the specific plans, how they shape up. I did look at the video from last time, I was concerned about some extraordinary, let's say, engineering gymnastics to get leaching fields in, and a site that I think is probably doubtful. So, you know, this will probably come out as this progresses. But I do think the Conservation Commission would have some, some comments as well, given that this is an AC/EC, and that efforts have been made now by a lot of people to preserve as much as possible this area.
Does the road flood?
Pardon?
You indicate that because you've given an easement, the road in fact does flood.
Yes.
Currently.
Well, so there's a culvert, we heard that, it's a big culvert, but the water comes down off of Blue Hill, and it is, it can be raging, and it'll splash up on the road, and you'll get wood that, that blocks that culvert. And that's really the concern that Langivens had, is, you know, they're stuck up there, there's an emergency, they have to deal with this. And, you know, it wasn't by accident that they came to me and said, listen, this is important, they, people wanted to buy the land, you know, all this kind of thing. I said, I can't really do that, because, you know, I'm part of this bigger community, and we're trying to preserve the area. But it was, you know, so we had this arrangement that worked out, and they used it several times.
And it's still, it's still there?
Well, the land is still there, the easement is not in effect.
The easement is no longer?
The easement expired when he sold the house.
What was it that you said was still in effect?
The, so the Hemingway Drive, if you will.
Oh, the restriction on the lot size?
Restrictions of six, right, six acre minimums, right.
Oh, okay. But in any event, you have the, you have the, there was at one point an emergency access to have UA over your land.
Correct.
Well, that's, that's interesting.
I think, you know, you really have to say, you know, is the road going to be big enough to accomplish, you know, what, what may be necessary in an emergency situation? So we can't, you know, like the fire chiefs will tell you, you can't imagine a spring day, you have to imagine New Year's Eve storm, and trees falling down, and the difficulties that go along with that. So I'll wait the plan, and then we'll maybe have another conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Would, would all the utilities be run under the road, or would there be streetlights, or have they gotten that far?
There could be streetlights, there could be a sidewalk, there could be many things. But, I mean, the rules and regulations, they're just basically asking that the rules and regulations for streets be waived.
Well, not in their absolute entirety, but.
Not in their entirety, yes, sir.
I'm not sure if.
Come on up.
If it was closing here, another butter that I wanted to comment to.
No, 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 we're not, we're not going to.
Sorry.
Cut you off, but come on up and be heard.
Thank you. My name is Peter Mullison. My address is 1431 Brushhill Road, which is the corner of Brushhill and Avenue A. So, it's the first I've heard about the specific plan. I guess I would ask in the future if perhaps the butters could, the neighbors could all be notified in advance of these discussions. Somebody reached out to me today to let me know this was going on, so this is the first I've heard of it.
This is a discussion, and I would think that the developer would be extremely wise, at some point, to file what's known as a preliminary plan. I mean, this is preliminary preliminary that they're dealing with. And if a preliminary plan were filed, we would require published and actual notice to interested persons, including everyone who lives on Avenue A. So the fact that, we're not going to conclude anyone tonight.
Okay, great. And so, as a neighbor, I'm interested to get more information about the plan. I understand kind of that it'll depend on, on what the capabilities of the road are, certainly open-minded to development within the zoning requirements. But I would, I would ask the commission to consider that whatever proposals are made in light of the Murphy property, they're going to have implications for subsequent development for Mr. Hicks's property, and that hopefully these decisions are made kind of with that holistic consideration, so. That's my comments, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And there are, you know, if, bear in mind that if this is a street, you can always build a cross street, if you have the, the available land. So we would really want to see exactly what we're dealing with here, as far as the entirety of it, all 1,700 feet of Avenue A. And with showing what the, what the adjacent land looks like, what the size of the lots are, whether or not we would be doing more than we might think. And it's important, because a 14-foot street is basically unheard of in Milton, pretty narrow.
Except in an open space development, but I've already explained that we can't quite do that.
But it's not a street in open space development.
No, it isn't, that's correct.
It's a driveway.
It's a major driveway.
Has Lot Three been perked?
No.
It has not been perked?
No. I want to say just a little bit about sewer, since it's obviously a concern, even though, you know, Board of Health handles sewer septic issues, and whether the lot perks or not is something that they determine with engineers. But it is my understanding, I don't represent them, that the Hacks are planning to extend the sewer line to their lot. That's the A and R that you approved a couple of years ago. And the sewer regulations require that if you're within a certain number of feet of an existing sewer line, you have to connect. So what's going to happen here is that it's possible that one, if not both of the new lots, at least the Hicks's lots, may or may not have to connect with sewer. It's, I don't know the answer to that, we haven't evaluated it, and we did talk about that, though, in a recent meeting. So there's many details here that are not yet clear to anyone. It's certainly true that Mr. Hicks has spent considerable time with an architect and an engineer to see what might be possible in terms of doing the second lot. The more difficult lot is the one back towards the Murphys, that's what you're asking about. So, you know, whether it would be desirable to extend a sewer line, for the reason that you point out, it's something that would have to be examined. The Murphys on their two lots have good land, it's upland, they already have a septic system on their own lot. They have not done any perk tests, but they expect that it will be possible to do two septic systems on their property, but they're at the very end. And they use, they have Canton water in their lot. If they locate lots half in Canton and half in Milton, they will have the ability to ask Canton to connect them to Canton Water. So they may not be looking at actually bringing a water line.
Doesn't it depend where the house is?
No, well, I had a meeting with the, with the planning department in Canton, just to ask some general questions about that issue. And they said that, although Canton used to connect some Milton lots to Canton Water, it really became difficult and controversial over the years. And they will no longer do it if you don't have any land in Canton, because they want to be able to lean your property if you don't pay your water bill. And there are other reasons too, practical reasons. But they said that if you do locate a lot, if you already have a lot that's half in and half, half in one pound, half in the other, and in this case, there's already Canton Water serving one of the lots, there they would consider making the water connection. It's something that remains to be determined, but that was the answer they gave me.
No, I, you know about the bridge, the Cooks Brook and the bridge that Mr. Hamilton is building. If you were to disrupt this culvert, would you have the same situation? I assume the existing culvert may have some sort of grandfathering protection, but if you take it out, don't you have a, a fairly big environmental issue?
Well, we haven't been to the Conservation Commission yet, and there may be one.
It might be, it might be.
We would certainly do that.
I would be very interested in, in getting some sort of reading from the Conservation Commission about what you propose, and what it might require. Because if these culverts need to be re-engineered and.
I know, I don't know the answer, of course, I'm not an engineer.
If you're running a water pipe down the road, the culverts are going to have to be disrupted.
I can tell you that the owners in their preliminary evaluation felt that the culverts were pretty big, you know, that they could handle flow. The question may be that they have to be repaired, or, you know, I don't know the answer, because I haven't looked at it, but it's, it's a question that will have to be addressed. And if there was something.
If they're in. If they're environmental issues, I, I would like them to be, like them to be flagged. They don't have to be solved, but I'd like them to be flagged.
Environmental issues are kind of generated over the size of the project, in a sense that, okay, you have a 14-foot wide strip of pavement that, you know, essentially is a driveway and, and you can handle that runoff and, and in that kind of condition without any impacts to the wetlands. Now, if you go 24 feet wide with a five-foot sidewalk, now, now you're, you know, pushing, pushing the envelope to the limits of the wetlands and, and now you're potentially altering the wetlands when you're, you're dealing with the head walls and the like. So the larger the project, the more apt you are to have some, some wetland alteration. Now, there's certainly, there's an engineering solution to everything, so, and also for that matter, you know, wetland mitigation, so...
Except for salamanders.
No, I, listen, I, I've dealt with them too, so, so there's an answer to everything.
There's a roadway now, there now, salamanders have been seen crossing them. And my point on that was simply that whatever design may or may not evolve if we go forward with anything, that we'd want to know where that's happening and that it's been looked at and accommodated, because there's all kinds of preservation that everybody's interested in maintaining in this area. DCR certainly has an interest, the neighbors clearly have an interest, all of the existing residents have an interest. You know, the more you know about where it's happening, the more you can plan on what's possible and what isn't. So, yes, of course, conservation issues need to be answered. There's a bit of a chicken and the egg. We appreciate the fact that you were willing to meet with us because we wanted to get some feedback from you and to know what the primary issues are. We know, speaking with the neighbors is very important, we're doing that. We didn't want to try to develop some kind of plan without talking to any of you, you know, even go to conservation without really knowing that the planning board, what the planning board's issues were likely to be. So you have to start somewhere. So this is very informal right now, very conceptual. We'll, we'll follow the proper procedures and have preliminary meetings, public notice, but we'll also have discussions with everybody before that.
You can talk to the members individually about what they think about the road. I think that might be worthwhile. 14 feet is pretty narrow, but do we have anyone else who would like to chime in? You look as though you're almost ready to chime in.
May I ask something of Mr. Burke?
Yeah.
The, the shoulder that is referenced, I think, in your letter.
Yeah.
What would that be composed of? Because effectively that's widening the street for people in a sense.
Yeah, basically, so the, the road construction would be 16 feet wide, you'd come in there with a, you know, a 12-inch deep gravel box and, you know, you roll on that with a, you know, 40,000-pound roller and compact that down. And then you come in right through the middle with a 14-foot wide stripe of pavement. So the, the shos themselves, you'd come in with, you know, I guess four inches of loam or something like that, but it'd be structural. So, you know, if you drove on the lawn, it wouldn't be good for the lawn, but it's not going to go anywhere.
So if you had two cars that needed to pass one another, would there be enough in the shoulder to allow someone to pull over?
Well, you know, cars are typically seven to seven and a half feet wide. Your, your fire engine, right over there, is eight feet wide, the ladder truck. So to answer your question, yes.
So it's effectively 16 feet? Is that what you said, effectively?
Yes.
Okay, because...
Effective 16 feet, yes.
Okay. Just for the members here, I live on what's considered a private driveway, has 10 homes on it, it's paved, trees are pretty close to the edge, two cars do pass, two SUVs do pass one another by just, you know, hugging the side very closely and very slowly. So just, if you're interested, call me, come on over to check it out.
If I may, one good...
I'm up and...
Yeah, I've been at...
Peter Hicks.
I've been at Brushhill Road for 32, 33 years. The main issue, I know I've talked with the Langivins and the Claps before them, and the main issue on that back drive is it's, in my memory anyways, it's always been in bad shape in terms of keeping it clear, particularly in the wintertime. So I know that personally, even though I don't wander back there that often, because I'm responsible for the entire neighborhood for arranging, because I volunteered, I inherited it from Thelma Pope, for arranging all the common maintenance on the various avenues. And, and obviously, one of them is snow removal, ice removal. And on more than one occasion, I've had difficulty, you know, there's, there's a common driveway that everybody shares and you always want to use the same snowplow guy. And then you get the strands off that are for each individual, so you have to work it all out, so everybody pays their share of the common and then you got to figure out every other piece and it's a nightmare, but we do it. And why that's relevant is, of course, once you get past the carriage house and you're heading back to, I say Langivins, it's no longer Langivins, it's, it's Murphys, that becomes exclusively the responsibility of them back there, because it's not shared by anybody else. But nonetheless, I have to make it work with the same snowplow guy. And therefore, when there's a problem with the snowplow guy back there, it comes back to me. So it's a long-winded way of saying, that is why I know when there's difficulties with the snowplow guy going back there. And I'm, I think, two different occasions, we had to switch out the snowplow guy. One time, one guy, one time to accommodate the Langivins, I had to change him for the whole process, because you couldn't have one guy doing all this and one guy doing all that. And it's always for the same reason, which is that driveway is in such lamentable shape that the snowplow guy cannot effectively plow it. But whoever resides back there, for most of the years, it's the Langivins, you know, they expect good service, because if they don't get it, they can't get back and forth to their house. And so that's what's caused, historically caused the friction between the residents and the snowplow guy, which is why we've gone through multiple snowplow people to do that back driveway. So I, in my experience, and I don't purport to know all the times, the Langivins may or may have not had access issues back there, but in my experience, the only time I'm aware of it, it all related to the winter months and all related to the snowplow removal simply not being adequate. And obviously, then, if the road is improved with or without this further development, if you improve the road, then you also improve the safety. And it's such a long road that I can understand why the Langivins and the Claps, their predecessors, never wanted to spend the money to improve it. So there you had the raw ball of those years, that's all.
All right. We have a rule that we adjourn at 10 o'clock and it's two minutes to 10. So I think that we're going to continue this without day. We're not even going to continue it. We're going to let you come back when you are, are ready to come back. And we've talked to all the people on Avenue A and, and so you get consensus, because, you know, it's their avenue too.
We'll certainly do that. That's part of our plan. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
What about the final agenda line?
What about the final agenda line?
The East Milton, East Milton discussion.
Okay, well, well, I'll entertain a motion. We go beyond 10 o'clock.
Don't move. Don't move. All in favor?
All right.
I'm tired, that's what I am.
All right.
I'm sticking it out for East Milton.
East Milton 40B, what is the, what is the agenda about?
It's discussion of proposed 40B or some...
I, I see that.
Oh.
40B is a huge issue.
Yeah, that's a big, I, so...
What is, are you, are you here to discuss 40B in East Milton?
I'm here because it was on the agenda.
In East Milton Square, yes, that's what it said.
Well, why is it on the agenda bill? Who put this there?
It was requested that they would come back with an update, so this is the language that was on the past agendas when Ned has come to speak about the project.
Okay.
It's supposed to be about Falcone, it's not 40B in general, it's Falcone, right?
So I guess I can do a brief update and then, so we had, since we were before you, one, if not two, large meetings in East Milton, one at the East Congregational Church and one two weeks ago, last week, at the Milton Arts Center, well-attended. We laid out the state of plans as they've been proposed to date, plans as proposed, respond to the notion that it's an affordable housing development, subsidizing 25% affordable units, parking count associated, parking spaces associated with the, with the scope of the development. It was a fair, fairly contentious meeting, lots of strong opposition presented to the plan. At the end, a question was raised, and it was attended by two of the selectmen, I think Denny, you were there, others were there. There was a question asked by one member of the Board of the East Milton Neighborhood Association, whether we had considered other options in terms of scale. And I said that there are other options. I, in particular, talked about the variance, a variance alternative, but I said that's, and that could reduce the scale by reducing the percentage of affordability. I said that is a discussion that needs to take place between town boards and not, not the Falcones. We can talk to cost issues, development issues, et cetera, but it is a significant policy discussion that needs to take place between the selectmen and the planning board regarding which, what amount of density and what alternative approach ultimately the, the Board of Selectmen are willing to support, because if the selectmen are willing to, want to support a plan that has 25% affordability, that mitigates in favor of one scale, which is the scale that we're currently at. If the, if they want to arrive at a lower volume of units and a less dense development and they chose to, would choose to support a variance approach and support that with the Board of Appeals, then that would mitigate in favor of a different development. But that's a, that's a policy issue, it's not a development issue. Falcones are interested in an outcome. And the outcome is either going to go through the, some form of a 40B process, or it's going to go through a variance process, and the town needs to, needs to determine that. I did meet with the selectmen on Monday evening, informally before town meeting, we had that same discussion, and I think their determination was that they would reach out to this board and ask for a joint meeting so that you could consider what those options might be. I know there are strong, strong opinions in different directions. Affordable housing has been a significant issue for the town. But as I say, the Falcones are, they're practical, they're developers, they want to do what's best in terms of the, of the end game, but they also want to develop a project and they want to do, get to yes in a reasonably short period of time. So that's the, that's the background.
Ned, refresh my memory, those are all going to be rental, so that means that 100% of the units would be counted in this, in that scenario?
Right, the current, the current plan is 69, 15,000 square feet, plus or minus of office and retail, 69 rental units, 50 of which are one bedrooms, 17 are two bedrooms, two are three bedrooms in accordance with the, with the state requirements, that 10% of affordable units be three bedrooms.
So do you know how many units it would be if you did the three-story development? And we'd be looking at 10% of those being affordable in that scenario, right?
Yeah, so...
You have an idea?
We've got a, a, a general idea, we haven't gotten, they're, they're just starting to look more specifically at that. In general terms, somewhere in the 50 range with five affordables, you know, maybe, I don't know if it's 50 or 55. And then the likely is you take a floor off the building. So you come down from, instead of a four-story building, you'd be a three-story building. And that can be designed differently, with different roof treatments. You can think about a gabled roof with the fourth, the top floor built inside the roof, similar to a 50, Elliott Street is the new building at the Milton Hill, or the Gamble Roof Style, which is not, it's a Gamble, which is at 36 Elliott Mansard Roof, excuse me. So, you know, there are different ways to think about designing the building to give it more of a feel, particulars that reaches out to the Basset Street neighborhood side. I think generally with, you know, by reducing to 10% of affordable units, you, you're subsidizing a lot smaller number of units, you're reducing the, the volume of parking that's necessary, that's cost-saving. So there's, there are cost savings that be achieved and I think you're bringing the floor, the, the scale down by one floor. What I don't know, and I don't know whether Bill has the answer, is, is what happens when you drop below 25%? If the, even if the units are affordable, do you get credit for all of the units or only the percentage that are affordable?
Just the percentage that's affordable.
Just the ones you, that are affordable.
So that's a, and that's a significant policy consideration that the boards need to address, give some guidance on.
One of the other things, the potential, if you have less parking, one of the things that has been bothering me about the proposal, just in terms of the streetscape, is the Basset Street having parking at the street level. So if you had either retail or residential, maybe even preferably there, and maybe that residential exited right out onto the sidewalk, I mean, that would provide for a, a better transition from the commercial to the residential neighborhood across the street. Understanding that one, that's not consistent on Basset 100%, because you've got retail uses over this way and you've got residential uses over that way. But the scale of the corner, that scale that, that there now is the portion of the building that is the most incompatible scale-wise, in my view, with the residential. And the use there being parking is incompatible. So that, to me, would be an advantage of going to a smaller building. Outside of the, I mean, obviously the traffic and parking issues that people have concerns about, but just talking about the volume of building that you put on there.
Yeah, we, well, one of the things we did though, it doesn't, when you render it and when you show it in plan scale, if you're already looking at what's a big building, you're not, it's hard to, to see how the changes have been addressed incrementally. The building has, as currently designed, has been pulled back eight feet off of Basset Street. We've moved the, the entry to the parking lot from Franklin Street around to Basset. We've got additional parking that we proposed under the existing parking lots, we fill all that up with underground parking. We've, we've reduced the scale of parking on the surface lot to create more of a pedestrian experience. We've pulled the building in off of Adams Court, we've pulled it in. So we've shrunk it this way, we haven't brought it down. The only place to, I, I understand what you're saying, at 50 spa, at 50 units plus commercial plus whatever, an important question to think about is how do you access underground parking, because you've got to work with the slopes. And so we can, we'll look at that, but we still have to park under the building.
We still need to get access to it there, of course. But the other issue is that it doesn't have to be the same number of stories all the way around, obviously. I mean, there can be some, it, it would be advantageous for it not to be all the same height, actually. We haven't seen those plans, so that you've just described all those changes.
No. We... We presented them a few weeks ago. Some will see the differences, some won't. We haven't, you know, I'm not sure we're prepared to re-present them because I think... Well, we could. We can do that in the context of the next meeting. If you meet with the selectmen, we can show you who we are today. We won't have begun to redesign from a, for a smaller perspective. But at some point soon, given the state of affairs in East Milton, and we've got to, there's got to be some direction given on scale and massing of the property, and then how we develop that is an open palette.
I might suggest to you that you ask your design team to do simple digital 3D modeling. Doesn't require you to have the building designs, just the mass. So, here's the footprint. Here's four stories. Here's three stories. Here's a four and a three here. Here's you do something at the corner to articulate the corner, just to start to get a sense of how it can, the scale of the building, you know, is impacted by this decision of what you're talking about.
That's, I can speak to that.
At least for, when we have a joint meeting, we'll have an understanding of the scale difference.
Well, if we have a joint meeting. My current feeling is that this clearly is a matter for zoning. And if you won't do it in the way it should be done, and you say it's my way or the highway, I suppose we could have a meeting on that view. But this clearly cries out for a zoning approach so the people can be, have their opinions heard. I looked at, you know, when I first saw the building along Basset Street, I said, "This architecture is unsatisfactory." It will, you know, it was clear that the neighborhood wasn't going to like it because it just wasn't good architecture. You've got to take off a story, and you've got to make it look like a village. It's simple as that. And if you do the zoning route, you'll save time because, of course, your 40B will take five, 10 years. The zoning route will take a year before you've got your permit. And you will only have to produce 10% affordable, which will make a huge difference in the financing that the building will need. I just don't, I am totally mystified as to why you say it's got to be either be a 40B or a variance because I think that that is just absolutely wrong.
Well, the answer to that is that we can use the design and view process with the boards to arrive at a project that works on a variance approach. It's now October 26. We still don't have Attorney General review of a bylaw that was approved in May for a project out on Canton Avenue. I'm not going to go through a process with the Falcones that may or may not arrive at an outcome through a zoning process that is done in May. And I wait till next fall at some point to get Attorney General review and approval of a bylaw that then allows me to file for a special permit. So, we're 18 months out from a special permit under that process. That's 18 months too long. So, what's too long, they've determined, and I think it's appropriate. We did it at 50 Elliott Street. We put 30 new units downstairs from the Milton Hill House property with variance.
You did that with everyone agreeing. Come on, you've got the neighborhood against you.
Well, the neighborhood, Alex, the neighborhood needs to weigh in in the process with the selectmen whether they will support the variance approach with a smaller building. If that's the case, it's easy to get to yes. It's the same process you'd go through if we were drafting zoning over the next several months.
It is not because you want to do it in a week.
No, we don't.
It's usual, no, you...
No, we don't. But I don't want to do it in two years.
Well, all I can say is that I think that you are short-circuiting the process. And I think that if you don't get what you want, threatening the town is, yes, you have.
No, I haven't.
Well, I assure you, you have, and I don't like it.
Good night.
I can fill you in. I have my notes on the three meetings. I was going to report back to all of you because I attended the last three neighborhood meetings. So, if people are interested...
I feel like we should have let people speak. They've been waiting for a long time.
Absolutely. I agree.
Thank you for saying what I was feeling. I've been to all of, to several of the East Milton neighborhood meetings. I'm Hallie Tauger. I live on Rockwell Avenue. And I most certainly, in my notes here, I said I most certainly heard the gentlemen say several times, "You can like it or not, we're still going to develop." And it was, it just felt threatening, like it didn't matter what the neighborhood felt. They continued to compare it to a successful 40B building, 36 Central Avenue, which has 18 units, 18 units.
And it's not a 40B project?
I thought it was.
It's a zoning project.
It's a, well, red brick, set rack. It's gorgeous. It's got trolley access. It's in no way comparable to what's being. And I feel like I'm preaching to the choir, so I'll make this short, and it's getting late. But the one thing I am concerned is if it does go 40B unfriendly, is that right? There needs to be reasons because most of those are then rejected at the next level as I've been reading the laws, and I went out and read 40B. What does it say? And it seems to me that in Section 4, Item 3, B2, "The relationship to adjacent streets, the manner in which, the manner in which the building relates to adjacent streets," it says, "is critically important. Massing should take into account the pattern of the existing street frontage as well as maintaining human scale by reasonably relating the height of the building to the width of the public way." And the width of the public way, that's Franklin Street, that's Basset Street, Adams Street, one lane in each direction, the backup from the expressway coming up the other way. Any way you look at it, the width of the public ways just are dwarfed by that.
Bear in mind that the mass housing determines all those things.
Oh, they do.
That's not, that's not, well, I mean, the ZBA can do it initially, but then mass housing will go to the Housing Appeals Committee, and mass housing usually gets the final say on that sort of thing. Not to say, I mean, if they did a 40B, it would probably be pretty good. But it's still, you know, why not do it with the cooperation of the neighbors? That's the way to go about it. Let's zone something for them.
My final word. I'm in favor of development. I support affordable housing, but I'm against this plan, so I hear you.
Okay.
I'm going to let someone else speak.
Anyone else want to speak quickly?
I won't speak. I just want to mention...
You have to come to the microphone.
Do I have to?
I'm sure.
If there's anyone still out there who hasn't gone to bed.
Well, I can get my pen back, though. So, there was, last week in WBUR, NPR, it was a good, listen, it was five minutes long. I know we got one architect that lives in the house my sister used to live in, and rather architects. And the title of it is "Those Luxury Condos Look a Little Drab." I think you might want to listen to it off of what some of you have been talking about. You know, basically, there's another way to make it look better, that's all. Okay, I think you might want to...
That's what architects are for.
Right. Okay, we all agree, I think, on that. So, it's a good article to listen to, read, and listen to.
All right. Send the details to Bill because we're going to...
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else want to be heard quickly?
Very quickly, but just as, I'm Jerry Tauger, 31, Rockwell Ave, in East Milton. And just one thing I'd like you to just run past again in the comments that were made this evening. Mr. Cochrane, in speaking about the 475 Adams Street project, said, "We originally planned 12 to 16 units. Now, it's a big building, too much traffic." How do you reconcile that with what he is suggesting now in East Milton?
Well, I don't have to reconcile that. Okay, who else?
He's just crawling through. Just don't scare them.
I know, right? You're getting past 10 o'clock, and he becomes a...
Thank you for waiting all night, all of you. It's been a long night. We're getting punchy.
It's interesting.
I live at 34 Franklin, almost at the corner of Basset. So, I would be looking out at the five-story edifice along Basset Street. The scale, the mass, the appearance, it's horrendous. I think the whole development would be the second worst thing to happen to East Milton following the expressway, in my opinion.
All right. With that, I think we're going to adjourn.
Okay.
We have that motion. It's seconded, yes.
Wait, 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 wait. Can Denny circulate? I see she has typed up notes. Can she circulate notes to us, please?
Yeah.
I'd be interested to see those.
Each take one. These are from the East Milton Neighborhood Association meetings. I attended three, and I'm happy to report another time.
Bill, give Lauren one for Brian.
Okay, so, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We're seconded. All in favor? Aye. We're adjourned.